Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton. Festerson is absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Harding.
(inaudible)
I promise this isn't going to be as long as my last opening comments, but last week, the sporting world lost a great one in Bill Walton. He was arguably one of the best college basketball players and was also a successful pro player, winning a couple of national NBA championships and being named MVP. And he was a respected basketball announcer as well. But Walton's more public persona was one of a free spirit and some might say irreverent. But Walton was also well-grounded and carried life lessons from his time at UCLA and as a player for Coach John Wooden, the Wizard of Westwood. Walton would share many of Wooden's mantras when giving public or motivational speeches. And there were a couple floating around the Internet last week after his death, and I picked out a couple I thought would be fun to share. And so here are a couple of them. Wooden's top two of threes: Don't lie, don't cheat, don't steal, don't whine, don't complain, don't make excuses. Be quick, but don't hurry. Happiness begins when selfishness ends. And never mistake activity for achievement. And it's okay to disagree, just don't be disagreeable. And I think my favorite one was one that apparently Coach Wooden wrote specifically for Bill Walton upon his graduation from UCLA. And it goes like this: It's the things you learn after you know it all that count. So let that sink in a little bit. Last week, I had a daughter going through college orientation, and one of the speakers there said something very similar. It was, "We don't want the kids here who know it all. We want the kids here who are curious, who want to learn." And I found that interesting, that not only, I think we all should take that to heart, regardless of age, whether you're going into college or sitting here as a body, we all need to be open-minded and continue to learn. Thank you.
Thank you for those remarks. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we do ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
And really quick, an affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
We are going to move up items 57 through 65.
Items 57 through 65 can be considered together for appointments to the Inland Port Authority Board of Commissioners.
The public meeting for agenda items 57 through 65 is today. Are there any proponents? Mayor, would you like to come up and be the first proponent?
I was waiting for you to look at me there. So, good afternoon, Councilmembers. Jean Stothard, 1819 Farnham, I'm the mayor of the City of Omaha. The Inland Port Authority will help attract new development, business, and jobs to northeast Omaha, and we all want it to succeed. The board will have a great deal of responsibility and autonomy. The nine members that I have selected to serve on the Inland Port Authority Board are well-respected professionals and dedicated community volunteers. Carmen Tapio, the CEO of North End Tele Services; State Senator Terrell McKinney; Daviel Phillips, architect at Holland Basham; and a member of the Urban League of Nebraska Young Professional Executive Board; Mike Helgerson, Executive Director of the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency; Michael Redman, President Emeritus of NP Dodge; Ernest White, First Vice President of American National Bank; Brooke Aiken, Director of Economic Development at OPPD; Jacob Hoppy, Managing Principal at Hoppy Development; and Thomas Warren, as my designee, my Chief of Staff. We have carefully complied with state law on very specific professional qualifications and residency requirements for this board. Experience in large-scale residential, commercial, industrial, or general real estate, development, community organization, financial services, economic development, a public official, and the mayor or the mayor's designee, each is represented. We also considered the restrictions on who cannot be appointed: persons who own property, including residents within the boundary of the Port Authority, and persons affiliated with an entity that may benefit financially from being on the board of that entity. Recent questions about Mr. White's service on the nonprofit Omaha Economic Development Corporation, or OEDC, and a suggested conflict of interest are not relevant. Mr. White served on the nonprofit OEDC Board as a volunteer without compensation and with no personal financial interest, which does not prohibit him from serving. However, to avoid any perception of conflict or further questioning about his qualification, Mr. White resigned from the OEDC Board, an action that demonstrates how serious he takes the responsibility of an appointment to the Inland Port Authority Board. Since the state approved our application to create the Inland Port Authority, many candidates were recommended, more than 40, by city council staff and by community leaders. After reviewing the recommendations and completing the interview, nine were selected. It was a very deliberate decision, consistent with the process that is required for appointments to nearly all city Omaha boards and commissions. By city code and charter, and often by state statute, appointments are the administrative responsibility of the mayor with city council approval. And I'd like to repeat that: By city code and city charter, and often by state statute, appointments are administrative responsibility of the mayor and then approved by the city council. This is a practice that I have been using for 11 years as mayor and the previous mayors for decades. The city ordinance that created the Inland Port Authority affirms that process. The nine members of the board deserve to be appointed based on their experience, their expertise, and a record of service, and this should not be personal or political. I encourage you all to support each member so that the board can get to work. Thank you all for having me here, Jay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none? Come on down.
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. And as I looked at those members that are appointed, I think Mr. McKinney is an excellent choice, other than working with Mrs. Barbara Hume-McRonie from UNO, not Mike Maroney. But then also Mr. White, I think he's an excellent choice, but I have mentioned to him several times. Senator Dave Karn sent me into Egypt and France, and he needs that experience, I believe. But he's an excellent choice. But far as all the other part concerns, I'd noticed there's no international experience on the board. So we asked Mr. Don Bacon, the House Representative, to participate because he just got money for offered Air Force runway. So we need Mr. Don Bacon, a House Representative, to make this project work. And we'll take all the business from St. Louis.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none? Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. We swore an oath of allegiance to the United States of America Constitution. Founding Fathers left certain things to the states, and the state's legislature supposedly represents us. However, in a lot of cases, the citizen that's not a lawyer has no standing unless it's on a ballot that we vote for. We get very little say-so in the halls of justice. Now, everybody that's appointed to these bodies are extra authority over and above the citizen. That's not what the founding fathers intended. They intended for us to have input into what you do, what you say, and what you vote for or against, not afterwards and not only at the voting booth. I can only vote for or against one of you, but there's six others that may be against my person. So I'm not against development, but if you look at the overall picture of all this, everybody that sets up there or on these extra authority outside of the citizens' authority boards with autonomy that we cannot answer to, have them answer to us, is actually unconstitutional. They have probable... Do you really think they don't have some conflicts of interest because they're lawyers? The lawfare that is written protects them, not us. There are also developers. Some of those developers are also real estate agents. So they all have fingers in the pie there somewhere. I'm not against development, but don't try to make us believe that they don't benefit from what they do financially. They do. Oftentimes, it's out of my back pocket through property taxes. So tread carefully because the citizens in this country are getting their backs up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as the mayor was asked, because we have so many people here today, we did put a five-minute timer on there. I know the legislature only allows three, but we do five. So if you could, just try and keep your comments within five minutes. Are there any other opponents?
I would like to thank everybody for their participation here and their service in trying to improve our city. I wrote a letter this morning that I sent to council. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. I'm going to read that briefly and the supporting newsletter from our Neighborhood Association.
Sir, I apologize. Can you please state your name and address for the clerk for the record?
Joe Higgins, 1110 East Camden Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Good morning, members of the Omaha City Council. We wish to support the City of Omaha, the State of Nebraska, and you, the members of the Omaha City Council, in working to improve our city. We ask that you form a partnership with your citizens. The best form of improvement slash development is inclusive, sustainable, and equitable. Levi Carter Sherman Neighborhood Association mission is as follows: Develop a cleaner, safer, healthier neighborhood and improve the quality of life for residents. Our first newsletter, Neighborhood Matters, is attached and highlights our concerns for the needs of our residents that mirrors the needs in our city. I'll read that after the end of the letter. The press conference that announced the beginning of LVBP II was to start as soon as possible, and that eminent domain was a last resort was shocking to the community at large. No engagement with the community has taken place with the planning team. Thursday, the nine appointees to the Board of Commissioners, the Inland Port Authority, was put on the hearing vote agenda as items 57 through 65. The open positions were not posted on the mayor's office, boards, and commissions page. I've been a resident of my neighborhood since 2013 and the Neighborhood Association leader since 2015. Our residents and neighbors ask that they be considered in the development. Your call to action is to partner to build a better Omaha. That's respectfully submitted. So I'm going to briefly go through the newsletter quickly. The Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy and Adjoining ABP... The Airport Business Park Development and the ABP Plan does not address the area's economic development and housing needs. One, housing insecurity, increased homelessness, lack of affordable workforce housing. Two, workforce labor shortage. Three, need solution-based planning, transparency, and lack of engagement. Our neighborhood revitalization began with a $90 million ABPP, the Inland Port Authority, and Amendment 164 that requires the board, a nine-member citizen advisory committee, and community meetings. The City of Omaha did not post current open positions for the Inland Port Authority Board of Commissioner. I stated when the meeting was, et cetera. And then the next paragraph, NIMBY, which means "not in my backyard," is crossed out versus "yes, in my backyard." So we're pro-development and improvement for our neighborhood. In 2022, LVBP I was the proposed site for the Airport Business Park Plan and $90 million grant with guidelines that funds could only be used for voluntary property acquisition. A planning grant was awarded to OEDC in January 2024. On completion of the study, a joint press conference was held and included Michael Maroney that stated he and OEDC have a 50-plus-year record of successful community engagement and development projects in North Omaha. And Mayor Stothard stated property owners would be paid fair market value plus additional relocation funds. She further stated that eminent domain was a last resort. We have neither the demand for massive commercial industrial development nor the workforce to fill job growth needs in the manufacturing warehouse sector. I've been informed by a commercial realtor and co-owner of a building that was built to suit their 20-year tenant that they are moving out, even though the landlord was willing to build an adjoining warehouse. They plan to relocate closer to where their employees reside out in the suburbs. Rilliter state, that has been difficult area to market for 40 years. Investors really has not leased space in the new 150,000-square-foot, 32-foot clear-span industrial building east of Airlight Plastics on Abbott Drive. Airlight Plastics and Losers Corporation have difficulty to hire $18 to $20 an hour workers, evidence of low demand or low availability of workforce. How will we provide affordable housing for displaced residents and tenants and future workers? How long will shovel-ready lots be in inventory before purchase and construction spurring new job growth will happen? How do we attract warehousing and manufacturing?
Mr. Higgins, if you could, your five minutes is up. If you could just summarize in a sentence.
We need to plan for people. Successful development requires housing, best land use, residential housing, affordable workforce and replacement, and inclusion in the process.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there other opponents?
My name is Joseph Fox, 461 Hartman Avenue, and the president of the East Omaha Neighborhood Association, which is directly in the sites of this Airport Business Park and will be controlled by the Omaha Inland Port Authority, along with the surrounding acres. I come to you, my time started, I'll try to be quick. I come to you today with a lot of questions, and I've given these questions to every council member, the mayor included, and other people that may be involved with this project. I've yet to get a single answer. I was hoping maybe she would hang out a little bit longer and answer some of these questions, or I'm hoping that you guys have the answers to these questions, because without the answer to these questions, I just don't see how you're able to approve these candidates, this project at all. I know the Port Authority's here. The legislation's been written and what have you. I don't know if I should read these questions with my time or which direction I should go. I know I come here with a lot of question. Our community is primarily residential property owners. This isn't just a bunch of vacant lots, parking lots. No, this is trees, this is green grassland, and homes, acreages, generations of living in a certain area. This isn't just some new celebrity neighborhood that's wanting to be like, "Okay, we shouldn't have put that there. Let's do..." No, this neighborhood's been here for years. Before we belong to the city, we've been here since the Oregon Trail. We were annexed by the city a long time ago. We've been here longer than the City of Omaha. Hartman Street is older than the City of Omaha, the street that I live on. Keep it short and sweet, I don't know the time, but every time I ask a current commissioner candidate or something, they won't give me answers to these questions until they're approved. That doesn't make sense. What is the purpose of them being approved if they don't know the answers to these questions? They would have to know these answers if they plan to represent this Inland Port Authority correctly. I cannot get any information on the Community Advisory Committee, the process, the applicants, how it will be said, what, so forth. And we can't get any clarification on what was the process for selecting them besides applicants, when I want to know how that went, because legally, you have to go into their genealogy. Family members of these people have to be researched. Was that done? It seemed so fast. She said, "Towards the beginning of June." This is the very first city council meeting in the month of June, and here they are, right in front of us. Thank God we checked all day Thursday and found that agenda Thursday evening. Doing this project and doing this stuff, especially with all these residences in the area, you're willingly shorting the Omaha housing situation, willingly doing it, when we don't have enough places for people to live as it is, let alone affordable. Even if you do need to buy a new house, there's not one to buy. So what we have down here is acreages. I don't know where you guys live, but I live in the City of Omaha, and I own an acreage. And that's rare. Buying one of those in the City of Omaha is pretty pricey, and I got mine, and it's paid off. So I don't want anybody to take it from me without a fair chance to fight for it and a fair opportunity and clarity as to what's happening. So I will start reading these questions until I run out of time. As council members, what type of process and research have you done on these candidates? What criteria or information did you use to prove they are eligible or ineligible to assume such board member position? They're going to sign a document if you approve them, and that document's going to be a legal binding document. Is that when we investigate? Who knows? The other one was, is why aren't these board members signified or designated on what guideline they're doing? Are they an economic developer? Are they the real estate guy? How come that's not worded in there? This is who we're, this is our board member for this guideline of the application of the board members, because there's got to be real estates, there's got to be bankers, there's got to be... Did I already say developers? Sorry. And there's got to be, I think I said, anyways, sorry. As, no, skip that one. Why are the citizens only given two days' notice on these candidates? She kind of covered that. This is how she always handles an appointment process, so on and so forth. But how many days' notice did you guys have? That's an important question that I have for you guys, because that isn't fair if you had any one more day than us, because these are two separate branches of government: mayor's office, city council. Now, Airport Authority's there. Now you're bringing in pretty much a third branch of government into this city with the Inland Port Authority. It carries a big stick, and you're opening up a situation for a lot of control against a lot of vulnerable people in this inland Portland, inland port district. And of those proposed boundaries...
Mr. Fox?
Yes, ma'am.
Your time is up. If you have one last sentence or question, that would be fine.
I have one last sentence. Why aren't we getting a fair chance to defend ourselves and fight for our homes, our businesses, and our town? Why is the legislature and the laws and grants being rewritten and ordinances being passed to make us more vulnerable? Why isn't it becoming more transparent? Why don't we still not know the plans and the objectives of this thing? And why is all of this happening if there isn't a true plan or objectives? And why are we not being made aware of them? Everything has been so vague, and I thank you for your time. And rest in peace, Bill Walton.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Okay, well, next one, come on down. If you want to come sit closer so that you can pop up, that would be great. There's some seats right here in front.
Tom Postor, 5215 North Sixth Street. Just like Joe, I've got a bunch of questions. First of all, how can this plan proceed without using eminent domain? No one wants to sell their house. Nobody wants to move. So instead of eminent domain being a last resort, it's the only resort. Every single person that lives down there is going to have to be evicted. The hunch that an inland port designation will trigger a burst of development activity is just a $150 million hunch. The Owen family has had a massive estate offered for sale for the last 40 years. It's right next to the airport. It's for sale. Now, nobody is rushing to develop that right now, so why do we think that property on the other side of Abbott Drive is suddenly going to get gobbled up by a bunch of eager What guarantee do the taxpayers have that the Port Authority pipe dream won't end up like the two neighborhoods of affordable housing that were demolished at 30th and Ames and Fontanel Boulevard and the Radial Highway? That was 20 years ago. They're shovel-ready. They haven't been developed. That's what could happen to our neighborhood. We could all get moved out and then, just like those two estates, just grow weeds. Nothing happens, and all as a taxpayer disaster. And those neighborhoods that were all affordable housing no longer provide tax income, property tax income for the city. So that's a couple of fiascos. Isn't a lack of affordable housing America's largest problem? Or is a mindless lust for development at any cost? Maybe that's America's biggest problem. We have a very productive orchard and mini-farm that we've spent years to improve the soil fertility with tons of compost, and we can't move it. Many of our neighbors are frail and elderly, and the stress and sorrow they will have to absorb to leave their homes could kill them. Nowhere in the plan is an estimate of the cost of sanitary sewer installation. This expense will have to be borne by the taxpayers. Right now, we're all using septic systems, and that expense is shouldered by myself and my neighbors, not taxpayers or MUD. When this project was first proposed, it was an industrial park, and residential housing was not part of the official plan. And now at this late hours, it's been revealed that 150 homes, mansions, will be built to replace my home, like the million-dollar mansions on the other side of the lake. The new affluent jet setters will have a two-minute cruise to their Lear jets parked over at Epley Airfield. And Joe Higgins mentioned the homeless problem that will get worse. We'll get another 175 people standing on street corners begging for whatever money anybody can hand out to them out their window. And the affordable housing problem is nationwide, and what our leaders need to do when they get elected is make sure that they don't make our biggest problems even bigger. So please, prepare some answers to these questions, you newly appointed guys, commissioners, because it's going to keep coming up. Because it's going to keep coming up. So, thanks for the time. Have a great day.
Thank you. There are other opponents. Um, I'll have to remind everyone, the candor in the, in the chamber, there's no clapping. So, thank you. Next opponent.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon. Anthony Rogers, right, thirty-ten Lincoln Boulevard, uh, six-eight-one-three-four. Um, I think that I share a lot of the concerns with a, a lot of our comrades and neighbors who have spoken, but I wanted to focus more on the process of the vote itself, and wondering what the rush is, why the vote has to happen today. Does the council have the ability to delay the vote until the mayor's nominees have a series of public discussions with a lot of concerned people who don't seem to know a lot? And then also just make sure that y'all are indemnified for making any mistakes. Let me give a few examples. Um, everyone took the oath for this commissioner office on or around May twelfth through May sixteenth of twenty-twenty-four, except for one person, Michael Reedman, who did so on March sixth, twenty-twenty-four. But according to the agenda, he took the oath for a public land bank commissioner, and I think that's a different position for what y'all are voting for him on right now. So can he even be voted on today? I think that y'all should check into that. And I think most importantly, uh, because of this happened so quickly, um, everyone did agree that they, what this, this office would not constitute a conflict with professional or personal interests. But how do we characterize that? Like, for example, if you wrote the bill and then you are appointed to the commission that the bill created, is that a personal, uh, conflict of interest? I mean, just, I'm not saying it is or it isn't, but don't we have to ask that question? What if you were in the process of running for office and you're on this commission? Is that a personal, um, uh, conflict of interest? Or you're working for someone who's running for mayor next year? Is that a personal conflict of interest? So, um, I think also people need to understand and want to understand what is the people's process for bringing a complaint about the commission if they believe potentially there is a conflict of interest? And I do think that until these questions are answered, you don't have to deny the mayor's nominees. Just delay the vote. Let the nominees have a series of public discussions with the people, answer the people's questions, and then come back and have a vote, and maybe there will be less opponents. So that's all I really got to say, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Our next opponent. Are there any other opponents?
Hello, yes, my name is Kevin Murray, I'm thirty-nine-eight-seven Iowa Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-one-two. Um, yes, I just have a, um, couple of things I want to discuss, and hello, commissioners and mayor. Um, basically, um, Zanita Johnson, we need to hear a little bit more from you. Ever since Ernie Chambers left, um, I don't hear too much about anything. I think, um, if you could speak up a little bit more for our community would be great. Um, but I understand the oath that everyone talking about that, um, leaders should have, but we can look at Washington DC, the oath really doesn't matter anymore. So I think that should be out of the question. Um, but contractors, um, as far as purchasing, um, area in North Omaha shouldn't be able to purchase them, it should be people like in North Omaha, people with low income so we can develop wealth. Um, that should be our, we should have the first choice on those properties instead of a developer. We should be able to get loans to hire developers to build our projects, not the other way around. Um, one more thing, well, a couple more things. The ninety million dollars, I was thinking it was going in North Omaha. Um, North Omaha is not East Omaha. When they were saying North Omaha, we were thinking Ames, Florence area, not Carter Lake. We were not thinking, um, Carter Lake when you guys were saying north. I think we were misled a little bit about that. But, um, whenever, next time you guys say North Omaha, please be specific on the area. North Omaha is Thirty and Ames, that is the heart of North Omaha. Um, also, as far as developing and intimate domain, I think Ames needs to be widened, um, to make it look more attractive, um, like on Broadway and Council Bluffs. That looks really great. We need like buildings like that, you know, as far as the clothing stores, you know, and different things like that. It needs to be modernized like that. As far as Thirty Street, I, I see that you guys, um, um, I guess it was four lanes, now it's two, now you have bike lanes. Um, that's all fine and dandy, but we need to make it look like Abbott Drive, you know, with the, the lights and the trees and, you know, curb appeal, you know, just like they say about homes. It has to have good curb appeal. When we don't have that in North Omaha, people come and do tours and family. Our area looks the worst. It, as far as being developed, it hasn't been developed. You're stopping at Lake Street, going to South, I mean, it's just kind of backwards. I understand we don't pay very much taxes like certain people do and have more money and, you know, giving us less, but I still think we do pay our taxes, and we need to be looked at as far as making it look more, more like Abbott Drive and Broadway. And I think that's something that should be able, easy to do. Um, and I think that's basically it, and I do greatly appreciate your time, and you have a wonderful afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent.
Cynthia Kelly, forty-one-thirty-four North Nineteenth Street, six-eight-one-one-zero. Um, my comment is pretty brief. Um, I just wanted to point out something that probably some people in this room know, but when a dollar is spent in North Omaha, it stays in North Omaha for less than three days, as opposed to a dollar spent in Elkhorn is something like seventeen days. And I think the result, or the reason that is, is because the people who own the businesses, a majority of the businesses do not live in North Omaha. The money comes in there and goes straight out. Um, I think that the, uh, Chamber of Commerce can probably verify those numbers. So the, the way to combat that, because it's the reason that North Omaha doesn't develop more on its own, because the money doesn't stay there. So we need North Omaha developers, we need people who live and work there to be owning properties and to be developing businesses and to be developing housing. Instead of people coming from outside because they already have money, and now they're going to pick up lots and lots of land for a dollar, I'm hearing? So they're handpicked, it's unfair, and the economic prosperity of North Omaha will not change under these conditions. And this port authority, this airport plan is all the same stuff all over again. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next opponent.
My name's Justin Riley, eight-oh-four Jane Street. Um, I just want to state that I agree. I feel like we should hold off on, on getting people put into these positions when we don't know them. Um, the little bit of checking that we've done once we found out who was being appointed, uh, there's multiple people on there that have ties to the O E D C, to the D E D. There's people that have ties to the, to the companies that are benefiting from, from this area. Um, I also feel like the things that we have down in our neighborhood, uh, the lots that we have, uh, we, I know we've been looking at homes just in case, worst-case scenario, and it's two, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars more than what my house is right now? And how is it that I own a property and own, and owe nothing on it, and I would have to go into debt to get a new property? Um, that's not right. I just wanted to state my opinion on how I feel about how I think we're rushing all of this to people that we don't even really know. Um, I also feel like the person that has appointed all these people should have stuck around and heard what people had to say, considering she's the one trying to push it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next appointment, next opponent.
My name's Mike Thede. I live at two-zero-two-zero Reed Street, six-eight-one-one-two. Um, we just drove around the site today. We were looking at it. Just in speaking, honestly, there's no way you're going to give those guys enough money to go buy another house to replace the property that they currently own without debt. That just doesn't make sense to me. One of the other things I have to say is, how can the very people that are affected not be able to be on the board? How can that be possible? They have no, no say, no word, they, they can't do anything, and, well, sorry. You guys represent us. We vote you in. The board, they don't represent us. They have another, uh, they have another agenda that they're working on.
There, there's no comments from the audience allowed, please.
Well, no, thank you, because I, I lost my thought. But anyway, um, it, it really doesn't make sense. I, I own, I own land down there, I own a business down there, and when I look at that, what is the big reach all about? Why did they go so huge in all of these places? What is the scope of this? And, um, I just learned this yesterday, that's why I'm not more prepared. I'm very sorry if I'd have known more about it, we'd have been more prepared for this. But, um, yeah, this is a rush. And once again, how can people that are there, people that own property, how can we not have a say? We have no say in this. This is the best our say is, right here. And you guys either take it away from us, or you give it to us. But it doesn't make sense that, I mean, just think about your own selves and your own homes. If they were making you move out of your home into wherever, because that's really what it is, wherever, and the cost of that is going to be three or four times the value of your own property, that's going to be a hardship. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be, these folks aren't billionaires, they're not high millionaires. They're doing the best they can. And to say, here, go out and get a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house, because homes are very pricey now. It's very hard. And same thing with business, you know, I don't want to lose my business. We've been there forty-four years. We have no reason to uproot or change or move anywhere else. It's what we do there. And, uh, boy, if they just come along at some later date and start sucking our place up, man, it's going to be tough for us to deal with. Thank you. I don't really know what else to say. I got a lot to say, but this is probably best. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent. And for others who want to testify, if you want to come and sit down in the, in the front row to be ready to, to get up, um, that would be great.
Hello, Melissa Youngblood at sixty-nine-oh-two North Sixteenth Street, Omaha, six-eight-one-one-two. Um, I just learned of how wide the map was from the inland port authority, um, actually yesterday from one of my tenants. We own a mobile home park that is, I will be the fourth generation of owning it. And the fact that they would take that away is actually appalling. The fact that we knew nothing about it until they found out about it via a link that they found from K E T V makes me even more upset. My family has lived in the northeast Omaha from Sixteenth all the way down to the Sherman area for, since we came to Omaha. And there was a section that was called Harpster Row, and that area would be demolished because of this. You guys are taking people's homes and turning it into what? I'm not saying that, you know, when I go to Denver, that it's not fantastic to see things that are around that airport. That airport is so far away from everything that it is a, honestly, a pain to get to and from. I would rather be as close as we are than to have to go so far. On top of that, all of these people I've grown up with, and they lived their lives there, my family, friends, everything, and the mobile home park. I have over a hundred and fifty people there to sit there and tell them that, I'm sorry, guys, you guys are going to have to figure out something else because these people are saying, oh, well, we're going to develop it some other way. We're going to do something else. That is just wrong. Most of those people are in part of the affordable housing. They can't afford something more than that. And you guys have constantly, on a lot of these, talked about affordable housing, okay? Have you guys looked at most of what affordable housing we have in North Omaha, northeast Omaha, and east Omaha? All of that is either, either owned from the families, they have bought it, they've lived there, they've paid it off, or there is, what, five mobile home parks down there now? And of those mobile home parks, they are developing, and those, a lot of those mobile home parks are improving those areas. They are making the areas look nicer. They are bringing them up to codes. They are doing what they can. But we are in quote-unquote, per things that have come in the mail, in a blighted area. Okay? Do something about that, instead of building something massive and saying, okay, let's bring all this business here. Let's do something to help the people here. Because what are we going to do? We're going to bring all those traveling workers who are, want to live in my park during that timeframe, that won't be there for them to use. They can't go to KOAs because they can't afford it. Half of the time, they don't have those opportunities. Okay? The, they would have to literally travel an hour or more to get to their places, to work on that area that you guys are saying that you're going to build this ninety-million-dollar thing. It, I really just hope that you guys look at, A, who you're appointing, B, what it's going to do to the community, not the money that it's going to bring in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent.
Louisiana Manus, twenty-seven-oh-nine, do we have any? Uh, just a few points, I think, regarding, um, where we're here today. I've learned that, uh, term limits in the legislature are a double-edged sword. I'm glad that Mr. Fesslerson is not here, uh, because I would have asked him to recuse himself, because I don't think he understands conflict of interest. Um, and another thing is that, uh, development in this area that you're talking about, a lot of people have ideas about it. And the reason why it's happening during this time is because I don't think we have a handle on what displacement is going to look like. Uh, so I think that, uh, wanting to talk about people that are going to be appointed to the commission and asking them what, what they think about displacement, uh, would be a good question for you guys to ask, uh, before you approve, uh, their, uh, their commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent. Are there any other opponents?
My name is Beverly Lawlum Taylor. My address is fifteen-twenty North Ten Street in Bellevue. This is not my fight. I don't live in North Omaha or northeast Omaha, but I'm very involved in the North Omaha community. I have friends that live in this community. Um, I have friends that are impacted, and they're very concerned. And so my, my plea to you as a body is to please be transparent, um, please plan for people first. Successful development requires housing first. Best land use is to provide mixed-use development to buffer Levi-Carter Park with residential housing. Affordable workforce and replacement housing is required first, um, for a successful airport business park that will revitalize a neighborhood, that will attract companies and job growth. More affordable housing will be needed to house residents, and you're going to need recreational use and placemaking to make the area more desirable. A little transparency goes a long way. Um, just open up, share, be as forthright as possible, please. People's livelihoods and lives are on the line. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent.
Hi, my name is Rowena Davis, uh, fifty-seven-fifteen North Seventy-Eighth, uh, one-six-eight-three-four. I don't live in that area, but I was raised in that area. And I just don't want to see the same thing that happened, that happened in North Omaha, I believe, back in the eighties or nineties when they put the interstate through there, and people, they bought people's homes and people had to move out west. Mr. Chaney, Chambers fought hard against it, and those people end up moving out, they had, their houses were paid for, and they had to relocate into houses that they had to, you know, buy. And a lot of people end up losing their homes because they couldn't afford the money that they gave them to acquire a new home. So I'm stepping up here today just because I don't want to see the same thing happen again. It's not a pretty picture. We keep tearing down buildings, but at the same time, we're not building houses. I mean, we're taking away housing, but we're not replacing it with housing. I mean, what's all this growth? We're doing all this growth, but what good is it if you have homeless people? Who's going to benefit from this growth? And at the same time, why don't we have the people in the community that is going to affect? Why are they not part of the board? We keep talking about community, community, community- We keep talking about community, 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 but when I look at these board members, are they part of the community? So I stand here today because if it's happening here, it's going to continue to happen. So am I next? You know, so that's a question we have to ask ourselves. We're sitting here maybe thinking, oh, it's not me, but it is you, because you could be next. So I'm saying today, you as our representatives that we voted for, stand up. Take a stand. Look around. It could be you. It could happen in your neighborhood. So let's do something about this. Let's not just sit here with our legs and our arms crossed. Let's be proactive instead of being reactive. And where's the urgency? Why is this all done? It seemed like to me it's kind, to me, when you rush to do something, it's because you're trying to hide something. So what's really going on here? Why do we only have two days? On the news one day and we got to make a vote the next day? What's really going on? Don't insult our intelligence. When you rush to do something, you're trying to hide something. So I say, you know, let's, let's buy some time here. Let's investigate. Let's research. Let's find out what's really going on and what's the true motive here. Because when I look around the community, I see how Creighton has acquired a lot of homes and land in North Omaha. And then when I look over in the Saddle Creek area, look at all those houses that's gone. So what's happening? Pretty soon, you're going to have all this development, and you're not going to have a place for people to live. So where are people going to live? Just like in North Omaha, you tore down all those affordable houses, and where, where are the people living now? So if we're going to grow the community, whatever we take down, we need to replace. So let's keep that in mind. If I take down something, let me replace it with something better as far as affordable housing. We keep saying affordable housing, but the people, I don't see anybody moving into these new apartments that can afford to be there. So let's really take a hardcore look at what's really going on here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent. And if there's another opponent, if you want to come down and sit in one of these front seats, that'd be great. Thank you. Say your name and address.
Hello, my name is Michael Thede, and I live at 220 Reed Street, Lot 17. My family owns that mobile home park up there. And we only got word of this Highland, uh, this association yesterday. We had no word of it, and it was only simply because of hearsay from other people. We were able to acknowledge this, and I wish that I had come better prepared to fight this and understand exactly what's going on here. I feel like this is being well rushed, where people can't bring an articulable defense of their property. And there is lots of statements where people don't want to lose their housing. They don't want to lose their land. This is not the wealthiest of communities. And the people cannot afford new housing if they are pushed out. They do not want to sell their homes, and so it's going to come down to eminent domain. And with eminent domain, you're not going to get enough money to buy a house. No one's going to be able to, and we're going to be in deeper debt than we already are. I'm going to be inheriting my family's business, and I'm concerned that I'm not going to have that anymore because they're going to eminent domain and they're going to take away my livelihood, my, my own children's livelihood. And I'm, I'm concerned about my own family, but about everyone else here that cannot afford anything. And I feel like everything is being well rushed, that no one can actually stand up and ask questions and figure out what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. There's a motion and a second. We have some lights on. Uh, Ms., Councilwoman Johnson, your light is on. You're recognized.
Um, Council, uh, Councilmember Melton, I would just like to point out, um, for all those that are in the room here, my colleague voted, made a motion to approve this. Uh, I'm not sure what that was because these items during pre-council were listed single, not grouped together. That's one issue. I, I asked for a call to order here because of all these moves that have been made. My council member jumped out of queue. I was first in line in queue to ask questions well before he made a motion.
Councilmember Johnson, motions are allowed at any time, and they can make a motion in a second, but we're not, I'm not going to do a roll call until you have the opportunity because your light's on and I called you first. So this is your opportunity to speak.
I call for the point of order regarding...
I will do so. Madam Clerk?
Regarding the, uh, are we voting on one item? Two items? Three items?
Okay, I'm going to answer your point of order, so let me have that answered. Madam Clerk, I believe these were called up as one public hearing. Nobody requested that they be pulled individually, so now it's too late. There is a motion that has been made in a second, but we will not vote on it or take a roll call until every council member has the opportunity to, with their light on, has the opportunity to speak and be heard. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. So there has been a lot of questions asked, and since this is in my district, I'm going to proceed with asking all my questions. I would ask that no one interrupt me from asking my questions. When I'm done, I will let this body know that I'm done. First item, um, on the list of question was, as council members, what type of process and research have you done on these candidates? May I have an answer, please?
Council, Councilwoman Johnson, council members are not under any obligation to answer your questions. If you would like to call and ask one of the directors or a member of the mayor's staff, I believe Chief Warren is here, you can call somebody up to ask questions, but you cannot call on individual council members.
So, um, just so that we know, Mr. Fox, your question number one, this council has chosen not to answer your question. So I will move on. As stakeholders in the Port Authority boundaries and possible victims of the Inland Port Authority plans and power, why was this community not engaged more thoroughly in the process? I guess that question would be for the Director of City Planning.
Dave Fansley, City Planning. Can you repeat your question?
Mr. Fox asked the question, as stakeholders in his community, the Port Authority of boundaries and possible victims of the Inland Port Authority's plans and power were, why weren't their community, my district, why were we not engaged more thoroughly in the process?
Dave Fansley, City Planning. My department wasn't in charge of creating the Inland Port Authority. We weren't part of this nomination process. So I, I, there was no involvement by my department.
All right.
Nor was it required. By my, from my department. I, I, my department doesn't have anything to do with the creation of this Inland Port Authority.
All right. I see, um, Senator Terrell McKinney in the room. You were a part of the, uh, process in which this was created. Could you please answer the questions to this community?
Could you ask your question again?
My community, your community, where the Port Authority boundaries are and possible victims of the Inland Port Authority's plan and power, why were we not engaged more thoroughly in this process?
In the process of the selection of the board?
Uh, that, yes.
You would have to ask the mayor's office. I, we had the legislative process in which we went through three rounds. We had a hearing. We went through three rounds of debate where people were able to engage. After that, I had no involvement. Once the bill was passed, it was on the mayor's office.
So the boundaries and the possibility of the victims, um, being displaced and all of that?
I just, I, I just want to be clear. I don't support displacement at all.
Okay.
Let's, let, just to be clear about that, I don't support displacement. I don't think anybody should be displaced, and it's possible to do these things without displacing people. So don't, I don't want nobody to put words in my mouth. My whole point of trying to do the bill was because the state was going to allow developers just to run over people. I brought the bill to create, to bring some transparency and some coordination around this to make sure people had a voice. I, I want people to have a full understanding of that. If you got questions of me being appointed to this board, my whole reason for saying yes was to make sure my community had a voice and we had a voice, and so developers weren't just running over our people. I have no financial interest in this. I don't make a lot of money as a legislator. I'm just in this for the people of the community. Outside of that, I, I, I'm tired of people putting words in my mouth and saying I'm doing things I'm not. It's really annoying.
Senator, could you please, um, share with us?
Yes.
When you were notified?
I got asked, I got asked to be, would I be on this board? Because I was out of the country for a trip. Uh, I want to say like the week of the election, like maybe a week before, so probably around, I, I don't remember the exact date. Like, it was like the early May, something like that.
And the mayor, um, just earlier, um, spoke, and she said that there were, there was an interview process. Were you involved in the interview process?
Hmm, no, I wasn't.
Were you aware of community members having, um, say on who would be a part of this, uh, makeup of the board?
No, but I, when the bill was passed and after the bill was passed, I did tell community members that if they thought people, if you look at the requirements of the people who could be eligible for the Inland Port Authority, if you see people within a community that you think are qualified, start just sending names to the mayor's offices, to the council members. I don't, I don't know the mayor's process. I wasn't involved in it at all.
Are you aware that, um, the board and commission, most of those positioned, when they become available and they're vacant, um, they are posted online on, on the mayor's page and an application for the community to apply? That's the normal format in which?
I'm not aware of the city's process, honestly. I understand people who have issues with boards and commissions in the city, just like we got issues with boards and commissions on the state level. So I understand that completely. I'm not aware of the full process, though.
Right. And so they, so we were not aware of, uh, when the opportunity for us to begin, um, send, submitting applications to the mayor's office. That's not your ballpark, but I just wanted to educate and let you know that many of our community members...
I mean, I understand people weren't aware, and that's fair. That's super fair, and I'm not going to argue against that. My, my only thing in saying what I said was, although I know there was a process, I just said, once the bill passed, if you think people are qualified, start sending names. Don't wait for the, today to say, hey, my friend should have been considered, because I don't trust the system, I don't trust the city, I don't trust the state, I don't trust the county commissioners, I don't trust nobody. So let's be proactive and start sending, sending people to people. That's, that's why I said that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next question, Mr. Fox asked, was why, as citizens, were we only given two-day notice on these candidates? And I'm going to ask that question, um, to Madam Clerk, because they were placed on the agenda on Thursday of this past week. Or we can ask the law department. We're talking about resolutions, but someone should be able to ask, answer the question regarding why this resolution was placed on the agenda and given the opportunity of two days for the general public, the city of Omaha at large, to know that these individuals would be, uh, decided on today.
Matt Coosie, City of Omaha Law Department. The agenda goes out on Thursday. These resolutions, just as with any of the other resolutions on the council's agenda today, appear on there. They, since they're resolutions, they do not require the traditional three-reading process that the ordinance does, and it would be Thursday, so the notice was Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then today. It's the process that's used for any of the other resolutions that appears on the council's agenda today, next week, and in the past.
So resolutions oftentimes have come with a two-day notice, two-day business notice to the community at large. Is that correct?
All resolutions appear on the council's agenda on Thursday, when the agenda is initially released, not just these resolutions, but all of the other resolutions that appear today and that are available for the public to see and view on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and today.
Next question, Mr. Fox presented to this body, was according to LB 164, Section 133310, it defines the guidelines for which type of board members. How are we to know who is who and which is which? Why isn't that designation or defined in the term? So if, um, the law department can satisfy, uh, the legal action, LB 164, as it defines how we came to the destination of each of these board members, can we answer the question, who is who and which is which, based upon the LB 164, Section 133310?
Matt Coosie Law Department, the section that you're referring to was amended in LB 164, and it included the requirements for membership. The mayor, the mayor's designated two members with experience in large-scale residential, commercial, or general real estate development, and so are, those are the conditions set out by the legislature as to the types of expertise that the legislature wants serving on the Inland Port Authority.
Next question, the terms for board members. What are they? That question is for the law department.
Matt Coosie, City of Omaha Law Department. That is also contained within LB 164 and the statute, and I don't see it in front of me, but they are staggered terms. And I believe the resolution lists out the length of the term for each commissioner, but they are staggered.
So that would answer the second portion of your question, Mr. Fox. Next question, inside of these proposed boundaries, the city of Omaha is not to own or have interest in any real property. City parks are owned by the city of Omaha, aren't they? Mr. Coosie?
Yes, the city of Omaha is the owner of the parks. The provision that you're referring to says that you cannot serve, if you've owned it, a rep, however, I would also point out that the statute allows for the ma- However, I would also point out that the statute allows for the mayor's designate, the Chief of Staff, Tom Warren, to serve on there. The mayor does not own it. The city of Omaha, the municipal corporation of the city of Omaha, is the owner of that property.
Thank you. Next question. Why were the port authority boundaries set up on December 6th and 7th and signed by the city officials when bringing in a port authority was even an idea made public yet? And the application for inland port authority wasn't approved until May of this year? That question is for Mr. Kuzi as well.
Matt Kuzi Law Department, the process that the council approved by ordinance was the creation of the inland port authority. The council approved the boundaries of the inland port authority. What that then triggered was the city's ability to then apply for the creation of an inland port authority. The way the legislature had this bill structured was you had to have the commitment of the city by way of an action by the council to create, approve, set out the boundaries, and the process for selecting, um, commissioners before applying. Once that was done, the city submitted its application. That application was then approved by the state on April 11th pursuant to state law and pursuant to the council's ordinance passed on the inland port authority. The city, the mayor and the council, has 60 days to constitute that board in terms of selecting members, voting on the members, and getting the board in place within those 60 days.
Why were members in the community not given a fair chance to defend themselves and fight for their homes and businesses or town? Why is the legislature and the laws and grants being rewritten and ordinances being passed to make us more vulnerable? Why isn't it becoming more transparent? Why don't we still know what the plans are? Why is all of this happening without a true plan or objective? And why are we not being made aware of it? That question too is for, um, Director Kuzi. Um, I understand that these are legislative questions. However, you've read the, uh, bill. Uh, it's before us and we have questions here. So, please educate and let our community know why these things are happening based upon the legislative body-making decision this past session. I can go question by question. I gave you about five. Why, is there any rationale as to why this community, District 2, were, was not given a fair chance to defend itself based upon this new legislative law?
Matt Kuzi Law Department, I don't know what defend itself means. The legislature, the inland port authority was already in existence prior to LB 164. LB 164 amended the inland port authority process with several additions to it. Several other cities in the state of Nebraska have inland port authority. So, I'm unfamiliar what defending means. But one of the amendments made in LB 164 to the Inland Port Authority Act was the creation of a community advisory board that the Board of Commissioners will constitute once they are in existence. One of the questions, defend, might, I'll presume, might refer to the multiple references this afternoon to eminent domain. I should point out that both the statute, the Inland Port Authority Act, and the ordinance passed by the council, one of the powers of this board, they do not have, do not have the power of eminent domain. In terms of the plan, the inland port authority's job is to come up with a plan. So, there can't be a plan until the inland port authority exists to develop a plan with, I would presume, assistance and input from the required community advisory group.
So, I guess I'm going to follow your logic and say that when they refer to defend themselves, they're referring to their social climate, their ability to make long-term plans, their livelihood, those kinds of basic things that we as citizens have the liberty to do. These are federal funds that, that we will be using. And the federal government is very astute and very complicit with assisting citizens with the wherewithal, education, and knowledge about what will impact their livelihoods. So, when they're referring to defend themselves, they're saying their voice, their ability to have a weigh-in, their ability to be a part of the process. So, I guess in my mind, it would, I would think that perhaps this community might have benefited had they been engaged in the process before it went to the legislator. What are your thoughts, Mr. Kuzi?
Matt Kuzi Law Department, I don't have any thoughts. I would never even venture to enter the mind of the 49 state senators and contemplate their thoughts, their motivations for why they did or did not do something. So, that's something beyond that I can answer.
So, when they're, they have a concern about being transparent, and we are, as a city, today what's before us is something that was passed down because of a legislative law. And now we are given the responsibility to enforce it or roll it out. Again, it's back to, at conception of this law, that would have been the timetable in which folks in the room, including District 2 representatives, should have been engaged in what was being, what was being discussed. We should have had our say with what was going on. Point of order, point of order. I still have questions. My point of order is, I'm had, I'm asking question and it's being, and I have a colleague that has walked around me and went and engaged in conversation, which is very distracting. Point of order. Point of order. This question is for Chief Warren.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thomas Warren, Chief of Staff, Mayor's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. As the elected representative for District 2, I am committed to ensuring that all actions taken within our community are transparent, lawful, and in the best interest of our recent, of our residents. Recently, concerns have been raised regarding the sale of city property for $1, which is not what we're discussing today. However, nonetheless, my line of question is still on that as well. And the subsequent appointment of members to the inland port authority with proper, without proper consultation. So, I have a few questions, um, based upon what I heard earlier today. And they were that there were some community members that were involved in this process of where we're at today for the nine members. Can you identify who those not, uh, who those community members were?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you?
No.
Okay. Can you tell us when these interviews that the mayor alluded to earlier were conducted?
So, as would typically occur when we identify candidates for appointments to boards and commissions, Kerry Murphy, our Director of Communications, will contact these individuals. We requested, uh, resumes, we ensured that they completed the applications, which were notarized. The interview that was referred to was a telephone conversation. And I would gather that Ms. Murphy had a telephone conversation with Senator McKinney, whether he equated it to an interview, but basically recognizing his credentials, it wouldn't require an in-person, face-to-face conversation.
Can you tell us when those interviews were done?
No.
Can you tell us who on the city council was involved in this process?
Uh, they were not. Appointments to boards and commissions are the responsibility of the executive branch of city government, and that is the mayor. And this is by city charter, it is by state statute, and in some instances, uh, by ordinance. It is the responsibility of the executive branch, Mayor Gene Stotter, to appoint members of boards and commissions. The nominations are then submitted to the city council for your consideration.
Was there anyone on city council aware of these nine-member board appointments prior to Thursday night? When it was placed on the agenda?
I'm not sure if there had been, uh, any information exchanged during casual conversations. But obviously, uh, we were, uh, to submit the names for the city council agenda, which is the normal cadence, the normal protocol by Thursday of last week in order for them to appear on today's agenda.
There were some other questions. Thank you so much. I'm, I'm, I'm good for now.
Okay.
There were some other questions that were made, um, from the audience, audience. They were, how many days notice did we have, which has already been answered? Then there was another question about how can this plan produce, be, uh, how can there be a plan without some conversation of eminent domain? So, I'm going to ask Matt Kuzi about that process because the plan was made. And do you have any insight on the eminent domain process that will be used as we travel down this journey?
Matt Kuzi, City of Omaha Law Department, as I stated earlier, the inland port authority does, and the area in the inland port authority, the inland port authority as an entity does not, by state statute and by ordinance, have the authority to exercise eminent domain. They don't have that power.
Okay. I believe I've covered all of the questions that were presented by the different individuals. However, um, there was a motion on the floor and a second motion on the floor. So, this is my opportunity to talk about the items 57 through 50, through 66. As we all know, since I have been on the city council, I have been quite concerned about board ap, uh, board appointments. And I've been concerned about that because as the city continues to grow and we have different populations, different demographics, and different cultures, the board makeup that we're seeing, uh, through the various committees is quite some troublesome to me. Jessica Wade, last year, did an investigation. It was reported in the news. And we had about 85% of the makeup of the boards that were white. So, I submitted a request to city council staff to ask that we reach out to anyone that was, was being suggested as an appointment to be present so that I could ask some questions regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. Much resistance has come as a result of that. Yet, the city of Omaha is currently promoting a desire to engage youth, young individuals. Keep them, retain them, all of that. To continue to overlook this issue of board appointments as it impacts the community at large regarding selection and livelihoods of individuals, especially like the discussion we had today where individuals felt not included, things of that nature. When we have diverse makeup of boards and committees, we have the opportunity to get all points of views. It is very difficult to engage in decisions, opportunities, when we have individuals that look the same, have the same background, same opportunities, et cetera. It's very difficult for these decisions that will be impactful to citizens throughout Omaha to have a say when we continue to have committees that don't look like the citizens in which we serve. But yet, we continue to do that. So, um, again, today, although I've asked for individuals that have been appointed by the mayor to be present in this discussion so that they could be transparent themselves, so that they can let the community know who they are. Many of them came, many of them didn't. But, I want everyone in this room to know that that's something that I find to be important. I don't see how we can grow as a city as long as we continue to operate with certain biases and never address everyone. Everyone should have equal opportunity in this city to thrive, prosper, have a say when things are going to change in their community. That's important. That's important, especially when we're saying we want to reduce crime, we want neighborhoods, neighborhood associations. They are made up of individuals that are volunteers. They work tirelessly in their communities for no pay at all. And yet, time and time again, we have development. And our city comes in, and decisions are made, and the neighborhoods don't. They're not even engaged in the process. But yet, when the development is over, somehow those neighborhoods are supposed to get back together and thrive and work together as a team with no pay. Homeowner associations, they have a stake in the game. They pay money to have homeowner association, so they can go to work eight to five and come home. And they, they got money to pay for the amenities of keeping the area clean, trash picked up, all of that. But neighborhood associations oftentimes found in East Omaha. Poverty, $20,000 a year. Wow. Struggling to make ends meet. And yet, we still have homeless individuals that are not able to even have a roof over their head. Unfortunately, or maybe it's fortunate, the community that I serve fits that definition of neighborhoods. Average income, $20,000 a year. Difficulties getting from point A to point B, because our public transportation system is lacking. And yet, when the time came for Streetcar, and I raised the question, called for the question, to address the lack of public transportation in east of Omaha. And all I asked for was, when? When will we address, as a city, address the needs of the community in east Omaha? When? Couldn't get an answer. It, it's coming down the line. 10 years, 20 years? So of course, I voted no for the Streetcar. So, we're back to the board appointment. For item number 57, we have Brooke Aiken. I met her this morning, was able to talk to her. She is a member of OPPD. I was satisfied with some questions. Unfortunately, she could not make it. She had other obligations. I did express to her the importance of transparency to my community, so that they would be able to know what her views are regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. Again, the Inland Port Authority, that board commission, the purpose is for economic development. Economic development. I will go ahead and support that, because I had an opportunity to meet with the young lady. The second one, number 58, Michael Helgerson. His name is listed here. He came to pre-council today. I'm aware of him, but I'm not so sure that my community is aware of who he is and what he stands for, and what his relationships are, working with all various backgrounds within the City of Omaha. So I'm a little bit on the fence on that appointment. The next appointment is Jacob Hoppy. Mr. Hoppy is a developer. He will be building Chambers Court. He just became vibrant. A developer, new developer on the scene in Omaha, Nebraska. I have had the opportunity to go to Lincoln and look at some of his development. I've had the opportunity to talk to him and share with him some of the concerns that District 2 has. He seemed to be very open about those concerns. The next appointment was Senator Tyrell McKennedy, McKinney. Everyone in the community knows who he is. So I don't have to explain that one. Then we have Daviel Phillips. Young man affiliated with the Urban League. Not sure if my community is aware of that, but nonetheless, that's where he's noted in, in, in District 2, is his movement in that arena. Little saddened that he's not here today. Have no idea why he's not here. Oh, Mr. Phillips, thank you. I'll support that. Mr. Redman, he is with the Land Bank. He was the originator of the Land Bank. He has expertise at developing boards, bylaws, and things like that that will be needed for this new Inland Port Authority. Mr. Redman, I've had an opportunity to network with him, work with him in Land Bank, as I too serve on that. And I've been able to have some relationship with him, where I know what he stands for. And I will go ahead and support that as well. The next appointment is Carmen Tapio. Carmen Tapio is not here today. She's out of town. But I have had one-on-one discussions with Ms. Tapio. Some of our community members in District 2 have had some discussion with Ms. Tapio. She is very much present in the community, and we've had some discussions there. And then we have Chief Warren. Then we have Ernest White. So I've shared with this group what I, what my viewpoint is on all nine of these. Unfortunately, this body has decided to make a motion rather than to do this vote separately. They've decided to do it as a group.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
I'll, I'll go off-script a little bit from what I was going to say, because I, I appreciate Councilmember Johnson going through each one of the individuals and, and having some discussion about each one of them. I'll ask, you don't have to answer, but I, I know you said you were kind of maybe on the fence of Mr. Helgerson. You just mentioned Mr. Warren's name and Mr. White's name, but didn't really give an indication of maybe if, if you were supportive or not. So that's not a question, that's just a point. Let's see, where, where to start? Okay, so the, the Inland Port Authority, the creation of, to submit the application to the state was passed by this council some six months ago. So this is not something that's being rushed. This, this process began well before that, but that's when the council approved the, the idea of the Inland Port Authority, which had to then go to the state, the D, Department of Economic Development, to be, for that application to be approved. And then the state approved that application early this spring. I think the date was April 11th. And then the city, as, as has been pointed out, had 60 days to constitute the board. And so that, that clock started on, on April 11th to do exactly that. So that's, this is, I, I just wanted to lay out the process to understand that this is not something that's sudden or coming up quickly. And the other thing is, is what we're here today is to place the board. This, that's what we're doing today. There's no plans being approved here today. As was pointed out, once the board is constituted, one of their charges is to form an advi, a community advisory board. And so the, the points of, and the interest of those who've testified here today of wanting some involvement for their voices to be heard, there will certainly be those opportunities. But before, and there is no plan, but before we have a plan or before we have those interactions, we have to place the board. And these nine individuals are what's on our agenda today. And, and I must say, I think, except for one, I was able to speak with, with every one of them. Picked up the phone, they're very engaging and reachable. And, and one, we just had a little problem getting together. I've been out of town over the weekend. But still, except for one, was able to talk to each and every one of them and discuss with them what their interest was in serving on the board, what their background was, what, what they brought to the board. And I got to tell you, I, I was immensely impressed by those that are stepping up to serve on this board, volunteer board. And so I just want to make sure that that's what we're here today to do. We're not talking about any displacement of homes. As Senator McKinney said, that he has no desire to displace any residents. I believe the state statute says the same. This authority does not have the power of eminent domain. The mayor has said she does not want to use eminent domain. So the, the plan, this is the opportunity to place the board so that a plan can be begun, to be worked on, and to have that community input with the, the community advisory board that will be formed and will also offer opportunities for other public input. Are we on the light, too? Oh, man. I better hurry up. Okay. Well, now you tell me, Sherry. Let me go through my notes. Okay, so I, I covered, I think, the, the process. And this, this is transparent. This is not being rushed through. And one, one other thing, I, I know it was kind of brought up or discussed. And, I mean, if, if we're talking about the diversity of the board, I, I mean, one, I, I truly believe in meritocracy, but I also believe in, in having chances for all. By my count, and I don't know why I went through this, because I, you know what? I actually didn't do it until today, because it didn't matter to me. Because as my discussions with these people on the phone and what they were bringing to the table, their individual kind of effort, their individual talents, that's what was important to me. But because it was brought up about the, the ethnic makeup of the board, I went through it. There, there are five black members and four white members. And I would venture to say that's certainly more than representative of what the City of Omaha is. But again, that wasn't important to me. I only did that right here, because it was brought up. What was important to me was not only the interest of the individuals that have put their name forward, but also the talents and their skills and their willingness to work on a project that can be very transformative, not only to north, northeast Omaha, but to the City of Omaha. So to the nine of you, thank you. And I wish you Godspeed and good luck on this, on this journey, because I know it can make a big difference for our community.
Thank you. Councilman Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Madam President. I want to just go through briefly. I know Councilmember Johnson and others have touched on a lot of the questions that were posed. And Mr. Fox, I did get your email this morning. Where's Mr. Fox at? Thank you for sending your email. I can just speak for myself, the process. So we get our agendas on Thursday, and I go through the agenda and look at the bios. So I reach out to most everyone that's on that list, and I talk to several of them. And I want to thank the ones, and Mr. Phillips is here. It was great talking to you on the phone and taking the time. I go through the agenda and looked at the bios and got the phone numbers off there. So I take the time to reach out, not only to the candidates, but also people in the community, talking to staff, talking to colleagues, getting a feel for, for each of the candidates. And I spoke to several of them, and I think it is important for you to know that, Mr. Fox, even though I didn't acknowledge your email today, in between meetings and, and doing the business in the council, on council day, I did see him. So thank you for, for providing your list. And I know our city attorney and others have tried to answer your questions the best as we could today, but that was my process. I, I do take seriously any appointment that comes to the council. And I do my research and have the conversation with the people that are stepping up. And it's not an easy thing to do to, if it's the Inland Port Authority or any board. Senator McKinney, I didn't reach out to you, but I got great trust in your leadership as a community leader. So thank you for stepping up to serve in the work. I know being on the legislative committee, we were kept posted on the multiple changes and all the things going on with this bill. So thank you for the work that you've put into this. So I apologize for not calling you, but I felt comfortable with you as one of the nine candidates. Going forward on this, there's a lot of questions that the community here that came down that's, they're going to have to need answering. And this Inland Port Authority Board is the body that'll do that going forward with the money that is going to be spent in the community and the things that'll come of it. So one other question I had for Mr. Cousy.
Matt Cousy, Law Department.
Mr. Cousy, Ms. Brooke Aiken is an employee of the Omaha Public Power District. As you know, I'm an employee there for 34 years. Is there any conflict of interest on me supporting the eight candidates? And also Ms. Aiken?
No. The standard is whether OPPD, your employer, would receive some sort of financial benefit or detriment from this appointment. And I don't see how that would be a feasible situation. So I don't see any conflict that would prohibit you from voting on her nomination.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Cousy. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Well, Ms. Johnson, you have your light on, but you're, you're not here. Are you coming back? When you have your light on, I, Councilmembers, if you put your light on, I'm going to ask that you do not leave the dais. Otherwise, I'm going to remove the light and move on. All right, no further lights, roll call.
Johnson. Roe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the liquor items. I believe council wanted to make a motion to waive liquor rule seven for items six through 14.
Just, you can do all of them.
Six through 14, okay.
Six through, motion for, to waive it, six through 14. Roll call.
Johnson. Johnson.
I'm, I'm sorry, what's the motion?
This is to waive liquor rule number seven. This is the parks rule on all liquor items for today.
So we're doing a rule again?
Yeah, this is just waiving that rule for all the items today.
So what's the point of us having a city pre-council?
So, what's the point of us having a city pre-council?
We're voting, it's yes or no, please.
Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one. Item six, to consider a class D liquor license for Bill's Barbecue and Convenience located at 4414 North 24th Street.
The public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Are there any proponents? Oh, I'm sorry, we had this last weekend. Public hearing has been closed, do I have a motion? Second, roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item seven, to consider a class A liquor license for Cumbia located at 329 South 16th Street.
The public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Are there any proponents? I believe we, I believe we have one by Zoom. Okay, he couldn't wait around. Is there time to lay this over, or Councilman Hug? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, proponents.
Good afternoon, Andrea Masia, 6128 Pierce Street, representing Cumbia LLC today. My business has been in downtown Omaha for over two years. Unfortunately, running in a small business is not only about the concept. Sometimes you can face challenges. And we had one with our partnership. That's why we decided to dissolve Parche LLC and move forward with Cumbia LLC. Basically, we are running the same concept, same location, same administration or management. I don't know if there's somebody with concerns or questions today.
Thank you very much. If there are any, we'll call you back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item eight, to consider a class A liquor license for Hollywood Candy located at 1209 Jackson Street.
The public hearing on agenda item eight is today. Are there any proponents? We, I think we had one by Zoom. We'll get you off mute here.
Hello, council members. Linay Tucker Shalou, representing Hollywood Candy, also known as Hollywood SOP LLC. And I also have one of the owners here. Erin is also available for questions. But Hollywood Candy is just really looking forward to being able to expand upon what they've already been bringing to Omaha downtown, which is a family-friendly, exciting concept that brings you back in time. But with that, there is always a change and some new offerings that can be brought to businesses. And if you don't grow and you don't change, you don't always compete. And so, Hollywood Candy is just interested in adding some additional offerings to their business. This is just one of the many that they are hoping to unveil in the next year or so. And as I mentioned, Erin is here to answer any questions. But Hollywood Candy is just very excited to be able to bring something new that will bring a different group of people into Hollywood Candy year-round.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Madam President. A couple of questions. What are your hours going to be? Is she still there? Okay. Did you hear my question?
I am still here, but that would be better directed towards Erin, one of the owners.
Okay, is Erin there?
Yes, hello.
Hi, Erin.
Thank you for being here and your consideration.
And Erin, Erin, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just need you to state your name and your address for the record before answering the question.
Sure, apologies. My name, Erin Wilkovich. Address is 3383 South 112th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68144.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Again, thank you, guys. So, what we're doing, our hours of operation currently are going to stay the same. We're open from Monday through Thursday, or sorry, Sunday through Thursday, from 11:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. And Friday and Saturday from 11:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. So, those hours won't change, anything like that. Again, just to kind of state a little bit of what we're looking to do, it's just a couple of ice cream or alcohol infused ice cream treats and things like that that we would offer in the diner area. It will be exclusively set for those areas, and we'll have plenty of signage to make sure it stays there. We'll be keeping strict account on limits and things like that. We love our store and I love the people that walk in here. So, I don't want people walking in and getting intoxicated and things like that. It's just simply like Linay had mentioned, some fun new offerings that we'd like to bring in, like some of the other new spots in town that are bringing some of those fun alcohol-infused ice cream treats and other things like that. So, just another new little thing that we'd like to bring into our diner area.
Erin, thanks for that, and I wish you the best of luck and continued success. It sounds like a neat little formula you got there. And I'll wish you the best of luck again, and I'll look forward to making a motion to support this now. Thanks, Madam President.
Roll call.
Johnson. This is a motion to approve item eight. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item nine, to consider a class D liquor license for Midtown Gas and Grocery located at 2302 South 13th Street.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Dave Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant Sidco Petroleum, doing business as Midtown Gas and Grocery. This will be located at 2302 South 13th Street. The managing member of Sidco Petroleum is longtime general manager. I would, the current liquor license in place in the business is a class D license with a restriction not to sell anything under 375 milliliters. And what my client would be willing to do is agree to a restriction which is currently in place on that business. My client's here, if you have any questions, the hours of operation are going to be 10 to, or for the 13th Street location will be 24-hour. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Just for clarification, is this to approve the class D or is this to approve the class D with restrictions? You guys, the applicant.
We would prefer just without restriction, but we're willing to take the restriction, should it meet council approval. Thank you.
Okay, it fails for no second. Roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 10, to consider a class D liquor license for Midtown Gas and Grocery located at 1349 Park Avenue. A's Communications in Opposition.
The public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon, council members. Dave Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of Siddiqui Brothers LLC, doing business as Midtown Gas and Grocery located at 1349 Park Avenue. This is also, though, a different LLC, a common ownership with the prior applicant. And again, the managing member of this LLC has been the longtime general manager of this location. I would like to make a motion based on some community concerns and stakeholder concerns that we've heard, to make a motion.
Well, we'll ask, only council members can make a motion, but I'm sure a council member will make that motion. Mr. Houghton, thanks.
We would, we would ask that a council member make the motion to move this to a class B license with restrictions of no sale under 32 ounces or airplane shooter-style liquor. And I guess, in this case, since it would be a class B, there would be no liquor. If the, if the council members have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. As I mentioned, the owner is in attendance if you have additional questions about the business.
No, thank you very much. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Donnie R. Johnson, Johnson Equestrian Foundation and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. We would like to be objective only on the premises of this young man getting his license, but can we also take in consideration that a medical marijuana is coming aboard and that you?
Donnie, you're going to limit your questions and statements to this agenda item, please.
But the city council's going to handle medical marijuana? Oh, okay.
You're done. And are there any other opponents? And keeping in mind that we are going to have an amendment to a class B, so.
Yes, can I get some clarity on the difference between what they currently have and what would be amended to a class B request?
A class B is beer only, a class D is beer and spirits.
So, yeah, I don't know if I can direct a question to them to ask, is this consistent with what they currently operate under?
Yes, I can answer that. We had the discussion earlier, so I'll just let you know, yes.
Okay, yes. Well, since I prepared some comments.
Oh, sir, you didn't state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Kent McCrimmon. I live at 3202 Lincoln Boulevard, 68131. But I will offer my comments as it pertains. Appreciate Dave's responsiveness to community input. And we've met with Dave previously in regards to gas stations in that area. Most recently, the NP Mart that will be just off of I-75 on Leavenworth. And just want to reiterate that we are thankful that there is a gas station near our location that offers snacks to some of our youth participants. They've been gracious enough to provide us ice for different block parties and events as well. But our concerns with sales of alcohol there is just the current management where we do have frequent police visits to that gas station that does cause safety concerns for our participants. That includes children, our ESL program, and also our citizenship program as well. Additionally, we, as a longstanding community member there, we were not approached about this change. And so, I know that there is going to be an amendment to what is voted on here today, but I want to express that we would be in opposition to any increase in alcohol sales at that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Councilman Begley, you're recognized.
David, if you can come up, please. So, you and I had some conversation on this. Tried to connect on Sunday, then we connected yesterday and today. So, I want to make a motion to amend to a class B liquor license with restrictions of no sales of single containers less than 32 ounces of beer. Is that, and I believe, am I doing that correctly, Madam Clerk?
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. And also, thanks, Madam President. And Kent, I did get your email, and I appreciate you reaching out as others in the neighborhood did. So, I didn't respond back to you because I was working on this, but you'll get a, well, verbal response that you heard what the motion was. And I do appreciate the work that you do in common and in the community. So, that's my, I'm going to be supporting the amended for the class B here as stated today. So, thanks for coming down. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. There's no further lights, roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 11, to consider a liquor license addition application for Gray's Craze located at 220 South 31st Avenue, Suite 3109, to add an outdoor area.
The public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today. Are there any proponents? Does anyone here from Gray's Craze? Don't think we have anyone on Zoom. Do we have time on this one?
This one will not advance without local approval.
We, do we have time? To lay it over? Okay, I'll second the motion. All right, roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one. And then, can we go back to item 10? Sorry, we voted to amend to a class B with restrictions, but we didn't vote as 10 as amended. So, if we can get a motion in a second on that.
Roll call.
Johnson. I'll come back. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Johnson. Motion passed, five to zero. Johnson abstains. Item 12, to consider a liquor license addition application for Lucky Tiger Izakaya located at 3852 Farnham Street.
The public hearing on agenda item number 12 is today. Are there proponents, please? I believe we do have at least one by Zoom. Ms. Malone? Hi, Ms. Malone, if you could just state your name and your address.
Dan Malone, 2811 Legacy Commons Plaza, number 105, 68130.
Thank you. And are you just here to answer any questions? All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Councilman Begley, you're recognized. No other lights, roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 13, to consider a liquor license reconstruction application for Casey's General Store, 6124, located at 2223 South 24th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item 13 is today. Are there any proponents? Hi.
Hello. Randy Olivet, 2334 South 30th Street, 68105, here representing Casey's and to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents? If you could just step to the side for one second, there's an opponent. And Donnie, this is, you're here to oppose agenda item 13. It's a liquor license for Casey's. That's all you can talk about.
Not to defund it by the federal government of medical marijuana?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, are there any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 14, to consider a liquor license deletion and addition application for Warhorse Casino Omaha located at 6303 Q Street.
The public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, my name's Ally Von Zager, and I'm general counsel for Ho Chunk Inc., that's the parent company of Warhorse Gaming Omaha LLC. They operate at 6303 Q Street, Omaha, 68117. I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this kind of double request.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for coming down. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Begley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 15, a resolution to approve the final plat for DMNR Investment Replat 3 located at 4848 South 66th Circle, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 is today. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, my name's Connor Shields with RW Engineering and Surveying. We are the surveyor and civil engineering on this project. Our address is 7525 North 101st Street, here to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearings closed. Just let me finish. It's all right. No further lights, a motion and a second, roll call.
Johnson, Ro, Begley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. The next items, 16 and 17, we got communication from the applicant that they would like to withdraw the items.
Is there a motion? Roll call.
Johnson, Ro, Begley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Items 18 and 19 can be considered together for Sinclair Edition located south of 230th Street and Edgewater Road, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 18, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to DR District. Item 19, a resolution to approve the final plat.
Public hearing for Agenda Items 18 and 19 are today. Are there any proponents? Oh, I think we have, we have them on Zoom. Mr. Sinclair? Hi, if you could just state your name and your address.
Yep. Good afternoon. My name's Aaron Sinclair. My address is 4102 Northwest 5th Street, Ankeny, Iowa, 50023. I'm present just as a representative and a proponent for items 18 and 19. As the applicant for these items, I'm just here to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you. Hold on, and we'll see if there is any. Are there any other proponents? Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Johnson, Ro, Begley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Items 20 through 22 can be considered together for Indian Creek Preserve located southeast of 204th and 4th Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 20, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R3 District. Item 21, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 22, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on Agenda Items 20 through 22 are today. Are there any proponents? Hi, just state your name and address for the record.
Joe Foley, 14503 Grover Street, here in Omaha. We're the engineers for the project and be happy to answer any questions that may come up.
All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Johnson, Ro, Begley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on Agenda Items 23 through 26 was held on May 21, 2024. Are there any motions? Roll call.
Johnson, Ro, Begley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I was waiting for you. My apologies. Okay. The public hearings on Agenda Items 27 through 56 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And I believe we are removing items 33, 50, 54, and 55? 33 through 46. No, that's, which items are we removing, Madam Clerk?
33 through 46, 50, 54, and 55. That's what was requested at pre-council.
All right, so right now we are doing public hearing on Items 27 through 32, 47, 48, 49. Is that correct? And 56. And we'll do a call at the end in case we miss anybody, because it's a little confusing. So if you want to speak on any of those agenda items, come on up and state your name, address in the agenda items you're speaking on.
My name is Jim Paulson. My address is 1502 South 80th Street. I just want to clarify because it's important to me. Number 50, the resolution to award the bus bench contract is being held over, is that correct?
Not being held over. We're going to have a separate hearing. We're going to address it specifically after we address the other agenda items. So we've pulled it off to single it out, to have its own vote.
Can I supply, are you going to vote on it today?
We will, and we will be calling it up separately. So we're going to do these other agenda items first, and then we're going to call up 50 separately.
I appreciate.
No problem. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Kaylin DeHilius, the director of the Human Rights and Relations Department, here in support of Agenda Item 56. This is our Equal Employment Opportunity Commission contract for our investigations that will complete from September 2023 through September 2024. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents or opponents that would like to speak in regards to these Saying none, public hearings closed. Is there a motion?
27 through 32, 47 through 49, 51 through 53.
And 56.
And 56. Thank you.
And I've already closed the public hearing. Does anyone out there want to testify or speak in regards to Agenda Items 27 through 32, 47 through 49, or 51 through 53? I will reopen the public.
And 56.
And 56. I will reopen the public hearing. And we can't, I can't call on people who raise their hands. You have to come down here.
Madam Chair, while we're waiting for your comment down.
Yes.
27 through 32.
Yes.
47 through 49.
Yes.
56.
51 through 53 and 56. Correct. The rest are going to be called up individually after this.
Okay, that's why I just came up to you for clarification, because we're trying to follow along. So you got a couple people here for the purchase of the property, and I'm number 39 and 40?
Yes, those are going to be called up separately.
That's why I just wanted to clarify.
No, thank you, thank you for doing that. So don't go very far. We're going to call them up soon. All right, anyone else that wants to testify in regards to 27 through 32, 47 through 49, 51 through 53, or Agenda Item 56? Saying none, now I will reclose public hearing. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Johnson, Ro, Begley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 33, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Saddle Creek Corridor Neighborhood Association for the sale of two city-owned parcels.
The public hearing on Agenda Item 33 is today. Are there any proponents for Agenda Item 33?
Hi, Alex O'Handlon, 3010 Lincoln Boulevard, 68131. I'm here as a proponent. These lots were previously part of the City Urban Garden Program, and Free Farm Syndicate has been growing on them as part of the Urban Garden Program since 2021. Free Farm Syndicate grows produce on empty lots and then distributes that produce for free at twice-weekly free farm stands, June through October. The purchase of these lots will allow for these lots to become permanent food production sites, which will increase yields and help to increase food security in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Planning Department, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearings closed. Counsel.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, but Councilwoman Johnson, you are recognized.
Thank you. I have lots of questions. Kelly, if you could answer these questions again. As the elected representative for District 2, I'm committed to ensuring that all actions taking place in the community are transparent and lawful and in the best interest of our residents. The sale of a dollar property is very concerning because we need to make sure that we are doing this with full transparency, proper valuation, and due process to ensure the public interest is safeguarded. So my questions are centered around making sure that those things are clear. Is the sale compliant with relevant law, local, state, and federal laws?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Are there any legal restrictions or requirements for selling public properties at such a low price?
These properties are being sold for appraised value, not for a dollar each. So they were appraised by a professional at $9,150 for one of the properties, and the other appraised at $9,100, and that's what they are being sold for.
What are the specific provisions under community development law that allows for this sale?
These are not being sold under community development law.
What, we've already established the intended purpose of the sale. What are the expected benefits to the community?
I think the applicant can best speak to that and already has spoken to how they plan to use the property and how that benefits the community.
Thank you. Alex, if you could answer some more questions as it relates to that question.
Yeah, was the question the proposed benefits to the community?
Right. I understand that you will plant food and things like that. I would, I'm speaking more from a point of view for our audience as well as people on Zoom. What are your intended use of the food distribution? How will you distribute the food?
So, oh, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, so we have a free farm stand on Saturday and a free farm stand on Sunday from 10:00 to noon. We have five lots throughout the city that we grow produce on. So we have one stand on Saturdays from 10:00 to noon on 10th and Bancroft, and the other stand is on Sundays from 10:00 to noon at 1123 North 29th Street, which is one of the lots that we're talking about. So those distributions are twice a week. Anybody can come get any amount of fresh produce that they want. Folks that have too much produce in their gardens, I'm sure everyone's grown a cucumber and gotten far too many, come down, swap out those cucumbers for a variety of produce that's at the stand. And so in that way, that's the direct, like, meeting of food security or food insecurity. And then at the same time, like, at those stands, folks come by, talk, building community that way. And then we're also improving the soil, we're planting pollinator gardens, which is creating habitat for native pollinators, we're reducing erosion through the gardens that we're planting, and just all around, like, creating a space that people can feel welcome and hang out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Question for city planning, were there any other proposed buyers? And if so, can you elaborate on who they were?
We have owned these properties for 15 and 18 years, and we do not know of any other interested parties.
Okay, as you know, I believe it was Autumn Evans was taking application until she departed from the city. And there was a backlog in terms of the dispersment, and then there was some confusion as to who had submitted requests or a want for properties throughout the city that the city of Omaha owns. So did we, how do we know that this did not fall into that scenario where it fell through the cracks, that there was another interested party?
She kept a spreadsheet, which we looked through. It was also noted on our GIS database, which we looked through, and did not see any other interested parties. And that's why we're changing our process moving forward, which I have emailed you and the other council members about, how all applications will now be accepted through a seller, so it not be through one person, but rather through a system where we can easier track applications.
And yes, I appreciate you changing the system going forward. However, we still have to right a wrong in terms of applications that were submitted during a process that we weren't doing such a good job at keeping track of those that were interested in property that we had. So what protocol or what provisions might we have should I get a phone call tomorrow from a constituent saying that they applied for any of these properties that we are now proposing to sell to the individual on the agenda today?
Like I said, we looked through all of our databases. We do not have noted any other interested parties. There may be some. I would leave that up to your judgment and how to best respond to them.
So my question is, should there be someone that makes that allegation? How do we remedy that? How do we fix that? What will we do? What accommodations will we do to make that right?
If you move forward and approve this purchase agreement today, then they would no longer be able to purchase this property. We have over 150 other city-owned properties that they may be interested to, and I would suggest they take a look at one of our other city-owned properties.
So the remedy for being overlooked, should there be a case like that, would be that they would have to look for a different property to inquire about?
As I have said, we have no noted other interested parties on this property. We do not believe anyone is being overlooked, and we've done our best to make sure that we are not looking over anyone else who is interested in these properties.
And as I am trying to share with you, that we're all human, and that there are, the way the system was being handled prior to you creating a new system, there could be a chance in which someone could have been overlooked. And should there be that situation, and it's brought to our attention, I'm seeking for a resolution on the record as to how we're going to resolve that.
I have offered, I think, several times our position and how we are attempting not to overlook anybody if we approve this purchase agreement with the entity who has been using the property for a few years now. They have been using this property. If we're causing harm to anyone, it is with a proposed buyer, because they have asked to purchase this property two years ago. All the adjacent property owners were notified when this went to Planning Board, as was the Neighborhood Association. So we've done our best due diligence to reach out to the neighbors, to the Neighborhood Association, to notify them that this is coming. And like I have said, we've searched through databases upon databases and not found other interested parties in these properties.
Again, I'm looking for clarity on the off chance if someone had put in or come to me regarding any property that they have placed to the city planning prior to this new system coming in. Should there be anyone that comes with a complaint that says that they submitted something and they fell through the crack? What will we do to remedy that situation? I want that on the record, because we're going to a new system, and we don't know for sure. We don't know for sure. I want that on the record because we're going to a new system, and we don't know for sure if everyone that submitted a request was, their request was reviewed.
I think, sitting behind you, I think Mr. Fanzler may be able to answer your hypothetical question.
Yeah, so Dave Fanzler, City Planning, I'd like to take a shot at that. If we don't have records or a record of somebody contacting our department and asking and inquiring about a lot to be purchased through our new system, or as Kelly has said, through our old system of the spreadsheet that past employees might have populated with information. If we don't have a record of people contacting us about a lot, I would say that we would not entertain new inquiries about properties that are on today's agenda.
So would you also say that if someone has in their hand proof that they did submit an application, you would honor that?
I would, Dave Fanzler, City Planning, again, I would say we would, I guess it depends on what they have in hand. So I don't know what you mean by proof. If we don't have information in our office that we had a conversation or they asked us about it, maybe somebody could have asked, and that could have been the end of it. So unless we have an application or communication from a past or current employee that we acknowledge that they reached out to us and were interested in the lot, it's hard for us to go back and look at anything that is different than that.
So if someone has communication via email, letter, et cetera, that they reached out to your staff on a point of inquiry for a lot or something, piece of parcel that the city owns, you will honor that?
I will. Again, it's hypothetical, and unless we have a record of somebody showing interest or wanting to, I mean, people can show interest, but unless they told us that they wanted to purchase a lot, I can't uphold somebody just asking about a lot unless they for sure told us that they were intended to purchase it. And maybe the communication back to them, and then they drop it. So it's really hypothetical. It's hard for us to answer that hypothetical question because we don't know what could have been our response. So I will say that unless it's in our records that they told us that they wanted to purchase a lot, then no, we won't uphold something that an email might say, and we don't know what our response was.
I raised this question because I did have a constituent just last year that fell into that category where they submitted in writing a point of inquiry for land. And they fell through the cracks. And then they had to bring it to City Planning's attention.
Is it, can I ask, is it one of these properties that are on today's agenda?
No.
Okay.
But the reason why I'm asking is because they were matched with pushback from City Planning about that purchase. So I know for a fact that there has been some inquiries into City Planning's office, and things have fell through the cracks, and we're moving to a new system. And I would like clarity on how we're going to address that because I believe that will come up.
I think I've clarified anything about past inquiries, and we will do our best under our new system to make sure nothing falls through the cracks.
So my takeaway from this conversation is that should someone produce correspondence prior to the new system about a point of entry or a point of interest, that we're going to perceive that as being valid because?
Again, well, I think what I said, and I answered that question already, is it's, I can't, it's hypothetical because if somebody can produce an email that they sent in, who knows if a phone call took place or if a meeting took place, and then they dropped their interest. So unless we have documentation that somebody intended to buy a piece of our, one of our property, it's very hypothetical.
But hypothetically, they could have an email that shows that they did make that interest known. How will you respond to that?
I have a couple of times. And unless we have documentation that they intend to purchase or submitted an application, better yet, submitted an application to purchase one of our properties, it's just that. It's just communication. And communication comes in all forms. They could have sent an email. It could have been a follow-up phone call, could have been a follow-up meeting. I can't, again, it's very hypothetical for me, and it's very hard and difficult, almost impossible, to answer your question.
You may ask a question?
No.
Yes, you may come up and ask the question.
I have that right.
No one said you didn't.
I just want to know what the regulation, when you submit an application, what's the inquiry?
Ma'am, I need your name and address for the record.
Gloria Bradley, 7607-063, Crown Point Avenue.
Thank you.
Uh huh. What's the rules for submitting an application? Because I know someone who applied for the one on Grant Street, and there was no response. So I just want to know, what, other than submit an application, what else do they need to do?
Right. This has to be, we can only answer questions in regards to Agenda Item 33, and that, this is the address on 1123 North 29th Street and 2926 Myrtle Avenue.
Okay. I thought I heard someone say Grant. So can you still answer the questions, though?
Yes, you can. Is the property that you're mentioning, is that on our agenda today?
No, just the one on Grant. But I just still want to know why it was not.
Did you submit?
No, someone I know.
Okay. Can you explain what happened?
They never heard anything. They just submitted the application and...
And what's the address in which they submitted?
I don't know the exact address. I just know it's on Grant Street.
What hundred?
But I'll, huh?
What hundred block?
24.
24th and Grant?
Yeah, 24th and Grant.
Can we, City Planning, can we look into this property that has been pointed out?
But I'll give you guys a call tomorrow.
I would suggest that if there's a question about a property that is not on today's agenda, that I would advise...
I'll just give you guys a call tomorrow.
I would advise that you contact our department, contact Kelly directly, and we will answer your questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. To God be the glory. My name is Natasha Brown. My address is 5904 Henninger Drive, Apartment 604, Omaha, Nebraska 68104. So I was under the understanding, by coming here, I could purchase a lot for a dollar, and then I have two years to build on it if it's residential, and I have four years to build on it if I choose business. It was stated earlier that that won't be happening today.
Well, what this is, and let me clarify, because we're on Agenda Item 33, and this is...
About Myrtle Street, I got it. I got it the first time.
Yeah, and this is for, this is for the purchase for $18,000 and some change. I don't have my glasses. $18,250. It's the market rate and to people who have been using the property for three years for a garden.
Okay.
So that's what this Agenda item is.
I understand you.
Okay.
And I understood the first time you spoke. I guess I was asking for clarification because when I, I know you said we're on this topic, but I stayed here with the intent that it would come up at some point. And I left a message earlier because I thought we'd have bad weather. But anyway, it says, "The person from your office says, yeah, this year, yes, Ms. Brown, this is Lisa at the City Council Office. I just found your message. I'm sorry. We've been kind of busy here today. Yes, the meeting did start at 2:00. It is currently in process as far as unless, my understanding is unless you've already applied for the property by the city. And if it is on the agenda for approval today, you would want, probably want to be in attendance. However, for more information about this property, you need to contact the Planning Department." I guess I said all that. I'm not going against your $18,000, I'm not an opponent to that, but when would you address the $1 one? The $1 ones that are north of Coming Street?
So are you interested in buying property from the City of Omaha?
Yes.
Do you know what location that you are inquiring about?
Well, I did look on the map, and I think it was in green, the ones that are available. And I didn't choose yet.
Okay. So we can safely say today the items that are before us are not, is not one of those pieces of property that you're interested in? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we can ask, and so you are interested in getting a dollar, and so therefore your question would be, how would you apply for that?
Yes. And then to, do I come before a group of you?
Right. And so, and so I'll ask that question from City Planning. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can we answer that question, please?
I think we're getting off of the Agenda Item 33, so I think what we're going to do is if we want to have purchases of any other property or discussion of anything else, I think Kelly will probably meet with them outside and get their name and number.
Alyssa can right now.
Or Alyssa can right now. But we need to stick to Agenda Item 33, even council members.
Madam President, I have a question for Ms. Johnston. Ms. Johnston, if a constituent has a request to purchase city-owned property, what do they have to do to get it?
First thing they need to do is submit an application. After an application is submitted, we will compare it to the other applications received for the same property and what the proposed uses are. We do look at a few other things. We look to see if there's any code violations under their name. We look to make sure that they're in good standing with the Finance Department. We look to see what they're proposing and how it corresponds with any adopted plans for the area. Those are probably the top three things that we look at, and then what their proposal is and how that fits within the master plan for the city and the adopted, other adopted plans for the area.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And Alex, I have one or two other questions for you. What are the long-term plans for the property? In other words, will there be a garden here for eternity, or is it just five years? Or what will happen?
So the goal is to have it be permanent food production. So with ownership of the property, we can plant perennials, fruit trees, the sorts of things that would take five to 10 years to really come to fruition that you wouldn't do if you weren't sure that you were going to be able to be on that property. So the long-term goal for these lots is for them to be producing food.
Thank you. More questions for the city? Point of information, how will the city monitor and enforce the term of the sale?
There are no terms or conditions under sale of this property because it is for appraised value, so we'll just ensure that it meets codes like we do with every other property.
Are there any provision if the buyer fails to meet the development goals?
No.
Thank you.
Are you done?
Madam Chair, yeah, I believe I am. On this, on this particular item, number 33. I will have questions for 34 as well.
I just wasn't sure if you were pausing or if you were done, so I will. Go ahead. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion?
We have one.
Oh, we already have, I'm sorry, we have a motion in a second, so roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Hug.
Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 34, resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Magali Gonzalez Barraza, I'm not sure if I said that right, for the sale of city, of one city-owned parcel. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on Agenda Item 34 is today. Are there any proponents or opponents? Anyone that wants to speak on Agenda Item 34, come on down. And if you could, just state your name and address for the record, each person before you speak.
My name is Magali Gonzalez Barraza. I live in 2556 Spencer Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68111.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Ray Mondo, Orona, 3129 Avenue, B, Council of Los Iowa. I'm an interpreter for this.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down. And I assume she's the owner of the property and she's a proponent?
Correct.
And you're here to answer any questions that we may have?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't you, and if you don't have anything else, why don't you just sit and stay close in case there's any questions for you? All right. Are there any other proponents?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Omaha Planning Department, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents at this time? If you're here on Agenda Item 34, this is your time to speak. Saying done, public hearing is closed. All right. And Councilman Harding, your light is on. You have the floor.
I'll come back. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson, you are recognized.
My head. I'm good here, but I had some question for City Planning. Thank you for your interest in the property. Here again, I'm interested, interested in making sure that the sale is in compliance with all relevant local, state, and federal laws.
Yes, as far as I'm aware.
What is the intended purpose of the sale?
As per their application interest, they own adjacent property, and they would like to expand their yard. Is that, okay, yes.
What is the market value of the property?
Appraised value for the property was $5,400.
Were there any other interested parties involved, interested in this property?
Not that we are aware of.
And what are the qualifications of the proposed buyer?
We made sure that there were no code violations for any property that they owned, and they were current with Finance Department.
They were currently what?
Current with the Finance Department. So they didn't have any delinquent taxes, things like that.
How will this be impactful to the community, the sale of this?
It would be impactful because the city will no longer be maintaining the lot, the adjacent property owner will, and so I think that will be a benefit to the neighbors.
Was the neighborhood identified, or was this discussed with them?
The adjacent property owners were notified, as was the Neighborhood Association, when it went to the Planning Board.
What Neighborhood Association is this?
I would have to look that up.
I would... I would imagine that you don't have any terms and conditions on monitoring the successfulness of this purchase.
We are not because we are selling for appraised value.
Thank you.
No further lights. There's been a motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 35, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with RH Land Management Company, LLC, for the sale of one city-owned parcel. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 35 is today. This is a resolution. So, any proponents or opponents to Agenda Item 35, please come forward.
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Omaha Planning Department. We did have a representative from RH Land Management. They indicated that they would need to leave. They had a prior commitment to attend. They did provide this statement that the intended use of the property at 2611 Lake Street is to combine this lot with three other lots we currently own. We are currently working with the nonprofit Spark to find a developer for future development of the combined lots, hoping to put multifamily residential on the combined property. That's the statement from the applicant. Obviously, Kelly Johnston Dorsey, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents, proponents, anyone that wishes to speak on Agenda Item 35? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. And Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Kelly, if you could. Thank you. Again, I think RH had to leave, but understand this about... Basically, it's about two and three-quarter lots with the odd kind of quarter that was at some time replanted such that it wasn't contiguous to the property. And their intent is to work with Spark to find a developer for that parcel.
That is correct. Yes. Our parcel is about 40 by 50, which is unbuildable standalone. It's not a legal lot. It's actually on the lot that is owned by RH Land Management or combined. This is just a tax parcel.
And again, this takes the responsibility of the maintenance off of the city's hands and puts it into RH's ownership so that it can be developed and put back to useful life.
Yes.
And put it on the tax rolls.
Correct.
And provide housing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. What is the intent in terms of RH management completing the housing unit there at 26 Then Lake? I'm concerned because that the adjacent property they own at 20... Nearby used to be a part of a namesake of Charles Washington. That house has been sitting there with no owner occupancy there for three-plus years. And nothing has been done by RH management to put someone in that house or even keep it up. And now, we're expanding their reach, giving them more latitude. When the current house that they have there, they had no latitude... They had no requirements there in terms of an anticipated date to put something on that piece of land or do something with that property. So, I'm concerned about now that we're entertaining the notion that they will expand their reach by getting further along with additional parcels that will attach to the one that they're currently not doing anything with. Are we not putting any stipulations in terms of when they have an expected targeted date to complete a development there? I understand that Sparks will be looking at something to develop there. But I'm sorry, but I live in that community. And it's long overdue that something is being... Something is done with that lot. And to have an unknown date for completion is somewhat troublesome.
Like the other properties we're selling for appraised value, there are no stipulations. Standalone, I can only speak to 2611 Lake Street. It is unbuildable on its own. And when we did a check to make sure they had no code violations, they... It was confirmed they do not have any active code violations.
RH management has acquired a lot of property in North Omaha. And they just that, acquired a lot. And nothing has happened with those lots. I'm sorry, but I cannot be in support of this because I don't see the end of the day as to when this will be built. I mean, if this body is okay with expanding their reach with no known date, just selling property just so that you can get it off your books, the city books, and no concern to the community, no concern to the residents nearby, shame on you. But I won't be supporting anything like this because I need to know... It's not okay for RH management to continue to buy property in North Omaha without a plan for development and when that date is going to happen. That's no different than having unreliable public transportation with no date as to when we're going to fix that for an underprivileged community. So, I'm sorry, I won't be supporting this.
Councilwoman Harding, you're recognized.
Yeah, just real quick. RH management is very well-respected in our community and is invested in our community in all parts of our town and has done a wonderful job of development and making sure that communities are seeing activity. And again, this is... This, if you will, squares off a parcel that gives them the ability to turn probably three lots, whether that be single-family or duplexes. I don't remember exactly how it was zoned, but this is a tremendous opportunity for housing stock to be introduced into an area that drastically needs it.
Thank you. And since I haven't had an opportunity to speak, so I'm just going to throw in my... This is something that we're selling at market rate, $4,500. They're purchasing this basically unusable piece of property for $4,500. So, this is definitely a benefit to the taxpayers of Omaha. And hopefully, we'll see some affordable housing come out of it. So, I appreciate that. I know that they were here. We are running a little long. So, thank you for reading their statement. I appreciate it. All right. Ms. Johnson, is your light back on?
It is.
Okay. Councilman Johnson, I recognize you.
I would like to speak to if RH management is so well-respected, then how would they be able to allow property to remain vacant or standing with no maintenance to North Omaha? At the very least, they should be able to say when they're planning on building here. It cannot be a benefit to this community with an open-ended date. So, again, I would say no. I mean, if RH management is willing to give me a timetable on when there is going to be an end date, since there's such a great benefit, then I could change my vote. But I cannot change my vote giving someone who has already showed and demonstrated in my community a different result than what has been depicted here today.
Thank you. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Two quick things. One, if you have the address of the other property that is... Needs attention, I would suggest giving that address to the Planning Department so that the public... Or the permits inspections can go check that out. And then I forgot my second point, but it's been a long day. I'm sure I'll remember as soon as I turn my light off. But thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thanks for the advice to call Planning Department, although the Planning Department has a department that goes out and look at code violations throughout the city of Omaha. And the fact that they have not done so, have not seen that that's been over there, causes other concerns. But... But again, me contacting City Planning regarding something that is an eyesore in my community and now we're planning on expanding their reach with no end date does not help me see a clearer picture in terms of when that area is going to be developed. And I think that it is not good business sense for us as the city of Omaha to continue to expand with people or developers that already have property, that haven't done what they said they were going to do with the current stock. And now, we are now expanding their reach, expanding their growth for that neighborhood to continue to sit and not know what's going on. When will that area be developed? We had a city planning... The Long School Neighborhood Association had a city planning... We had a redevelopment plan created in 1999. We were told that there was going to be over 100 pieces of parcels added, houses, all of that. And it's not happened. So, when we don't put timetables on when things are going to happen, then this is what happens to a community. We have vacant lots. We have crime. We have weeds. And yet, the community should call in and report these things, make it make sense.
Councilman Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you. Kelly, could you come up? I just have one question. So, this property is being sold at the appraised value. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, there's no restrictions, no stipulations that we put on property that's sold at a fair appraised value, right?
On a few of them later on on the agenda, we do have a time restraint on them because the comps used in the appraisal were land bank comps. And so, Land Bank associates conditions on the sale of property as well. So, we thought to be fair with those lower comps, we needed to associate a timeline with those. These appraisals did not use those as comps, and so, they were a higher appraised value. So, we did not think it was fair to associate a timeline with those.
Okay. So, it would be fair to say that when we have property that we're selling below what would be a fair appraised value?
Correct.
Then you can put and will put stipulations on how soon they need to start construction or, you know, their intended use.
Absolutely.
And an end date.
Absolutely, and we have.
Okay. And I think we'll see that later on on the agenda.
Indeed.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
So, either Don was reading my mind or he's reading my notes because that's the second one I forgot. It was I wanted to bring up the point of deed restrictions and how it might apply or not apply in this case, but as we'll learn further on in some of the future ones that we're going to discuss, I'm sure that where we see that being implemented, so.
No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one. Item 36, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Omaha 100, Inc., for the sale of four city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on Agenda Item 36 is today. Are there any proponents or opponents? So, it doesn't matter which side you're on. You can come on down if you want to talk about Agenda Item 36 and just state your name and your address.
So, proponent. And good afternoon to the honorable members of the City Council. I'm Melinda Williams, President and CEO for Omaha 100, 2401 Lake Street, Omaha, Nebraska, I can just go into the...
Yes. This is your time. You tell us... Tell us what you want to say.
Great. Okay. So, in addition to providing access to capital through innovative mortgage financing, business lending, and debt consolidation lending, our organization was an awardee of the Middle Income Workforce Housing Grant to assess the affordable housing crisis that's happening in our beloved city. The purpose of our endeavor is to construct affordable and attractive new construction homes targeted towards first-time homebuyers, middle-income families, and emerging workforce as outlined in the 22 Middle Income legislation. These homes will be priced in the range of $120,000 to $330,000, ensuring accessibility and affordability for individuals and families seeking to establish roots in our vibrant community. We firmly believe that this project will not only address the pressing need for affordable housing, but also strengthen the fabric of our society by increasing homeownership across the members of North Omaha's community. By providing these opportunities for individuals to invest in their own homes, we empower them to build a sense of stability, pride, and economic security. As a CDFI, Omaha 100 has been committed to fostering equity and unity and cooperation, not only through the homeownership process that we have led over the past 35 years there in the community, but also now throughout this development process for these new construction homes. We also recognize the importance of working hand-in-hand with the City Council Neighborhood Association members, adjacent landowners, and community to ensure a seamless and inclusive approach. We humbly request the support and consideration of the City Council in our efforts, and together we can create a bright future for all residents of Omaha where the dream of homeownership can be a reality for all families. Thank you for your attention and continued dedication to the well-being of our city.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Planning Department, here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any other proponents or opponents?
I'm not real sure about what you removed from the agenda and you didn't remove from the agenda. Too many things going on there with it in and out.
Well, we're on Agenda Item 36.
So, I will complain on this one, oppose. But there's a series of other things right after this that this will apply to also. Maybe Juanita can get some answers for us because I'll probably be shut off. I would like to know why all of a sudden we're talking about selling properties for $3, $4, $6, $5, and what happens to these properties? Now, this morning, I was cut out of here for trying to get answers on property tax that nonprofits pay or do not pay. Some of these people are nonprofits, and they're buying land for $3, $4, $6. Maybe they're a developer, or maybe they're a real estate company. They go out and build something on this or come to the council and ask for tax increment financing. But somewhere in here also is the Omaha Land Bank. And I don't think there's enough transparency for the average citizen that is not a lawyer... Excuse me, sir, but I'm not a lawyer. I did take some business law. However, we're not really given clear presentations on how all this works. How is this related to Douglas County, for example? And what goes on there with property tax exemptions? Now, this morning, I tried to get an answer from Board of Equalization about... Excuse me. Back in October, he said that even a nonprofit, if they're the owner of the property at the time, they pay the taxes. Excuse me. The nonprofit that is tax-exempt does not pay the tax. So, he did not answer the question. And when I protested for it, I was called out of order and sent out of this building. And when I protested for it, I was called out of order and sent out of this building. We expect you people to explain these things to us. Now, how does this relate to what happened this morning? And how does the last item relate to this item that's being sold for $4 or $5? And the series of the other ones come in behind this? I don't know how many of those you cut out of the agenda, or we'll be talking about because you went so fast through all those numbers. People that are not trained in this procedure cannot follow you when they come down here because of these games you play. Let's stop it and have the full discussions like Juanita tries to have. And I don't appreciate watching the grimaces on some faces when she does. She is a representative of the people and demands a little more respect than I think she gets. And I think this morning was a good example that citizens demand more respect than what they got. You guys work for us, it's not the other way around. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents or opponents on Agenda Item 36?
Joe Fox, 461 Hartman Avenue. It's to my understanding that Omaha 100, Inc. is using middle-income grant money to build these homes. The city's giving them basically free land to do so. And when these homes are sold, or will these be rented, or? These will be sold. I'm not sure as to where the profit and the money that is acquired from selling those homes goes to, because Omaha, Inc. is not a nonprofit, so they're using... I'm under the thing, go ahead, ma'am. Yeah, sorry. I just, that's my understanding, and I'm just trying to get this nipped in the bud. A lot of people are here curious about these cheap properties. So on item number 36, I'm confused as to why a company that is using grant money, getting basically free land, and selling these homes, which is awesome, I love the thought of selling a home rather than renting it to them for the rest of their lives. Where does the money from selling that home go? And where did the grant money come from to begin with? This is just my confusion. And I think it's going to be a lot of questions on most of these agenda items going to like 45 or so. So I just kind of wanted to jump in here. Nothing against Omaha 100, or this gal behind me, sorry, just wanted to get that kind of conversation rolling, maybe to explain that going forward, like, these are being sold so cheap because of maybe the constraints that the city was going to put on them, where they got to build them in so much time, because they're not at, obviously, market value. So these properties will be sold with some type of constraint of a time schedule, and this and this. I just, I'm confused as to why they're so cheap if this company, Omaha 100, is going to sell them? And the grant money used to build them, does that get paid back? It's a grant. I don't think grants get paid back, so that's my questions and concerns. And it's about line items 36 through about 40, 36 through like 44, so, thank you.
Are there any other proponents or opponents on Agenda Item 36? Saying none, public hearings closed. Second. Ms. Johnson, is your light on?
My light has been on every time Mr. Harding has jumped and said motion to approve. So just continue with your movement and ignore my light being on. And when he's done, and he gets his second, then I'll ask my question.
He has a motion and a second. You don't need your light on for a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson, you are recognized.
Where's his second?
I seconded the motion.
Oh, you just seconded through your screaming at me. Wow. Now. Melinda?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Fox is not familiar with Omaha 100. And I think he kind of wants to be brought up to speed. So can you give us a commercial on what Omaha 100 is, and maybe answer his question regarding the opportunity to purchase the house once your land is built?
Yes, ma'am. I'd love to. So Omaha 100 is a nonprofit lender. We're designated by the U.S. Department of Treasury as a community development financial institution. Our goal is to provide holistic access to capital for the community that usually experiences some type of barrier in accessing capital, whether that be for homeownership, business ownership, or building financial capacity for themselves and their families. Those homes will be, are being financed through the middle-income grant. And that grant is to subsidize the development because of the costs in the current environment that exists in construction. The costs are beyond what we are able to sell them for, so it helps us meet the gap to develop the homes. So there's not a profit.
And any idea when, if, should this be approved? When will the construction be completed?
So the construction, ideally with this approval, will be able to commence towards the end of the summer. And then we, by our grant, will need to be complete by June of '25.
And I think it was a good deal in terms of you networking with the community, in terms of working with Bishop Ford and discussing that same interest in maybe one or two of those pieces of parcels?
Yes, ma'am.
And how you guys navigated through that and came up with a win-win for both of your interests? If you could share with us that conversation?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Bishop Ford and I had the opportunity to meet and discuss more about, with him being an adjacent landowner, discuss more about their plans and vision, as well as the Neighborhood Association. And so being able to be in alignment with the development plans will really show this, or have an outcome of success for that community as we build the neighborhood, because currently, I mean, it's an entire block that is undeveloped. And so we'll be excited to be able to add to that community and add homeowners to the area.
Thank you. All right, and Ms. Johnston, if you could now, since we are talking about the dollar versus market rate, if you could share and bring us up to speed, knowledge-wise, as to the city's position with community development law and things of that nature on these properties that we'll be discussing going forward.
Yeah, so number nine in the purchase agreement is deed restrictions. So B, the buyer needs to commence construction of the project within 24 months of the closing date, and if not, the seller should have the right to purchase the property for the purchase price. C, in the event the buyer does not substantially complete construction of the project within 42 months of the closing date, the seller should have the right to repurchase the property for the purchase price. And then D stipulates that the buyer needs to sell at least four housing units to qualified households at or below 120% of the median family income as determined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development on an annual basis. And if not, the buyer will pay the seller the fair market value of the property at time of closing.
Thank you. No other questions.
Councilwoman Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks. I'm sorry, Kelly, could you just stay there for a second? I'll just pick up a little bit on something that Mr. Fox brought up. And maybe we, if he alluded to the fact, or alluded to the point that there may be some in the, in the gallery that may have similar questions on, on the reason for the difference in selling for the appraised price for something less than the appraised price, for fair value. And maybe it would be helpful to kind of explain, because we have a number of those coming up that are less than. So maybe explain the reason why that is because of the redevelopment area that's been approved by.
Absolutely, thank you. So we are able to sell for appraised value, which were the previous agenda items. Now we're moving into those that we're selling under community development law. So if we have a City Council-adopted redevelopment plan for an area, we can follow Nebraska Community Development Law and sell them for fair value. In state law, it states, determining the fair value of real property for uses in accordance with the redevelopment plan, an authority shall take into account and give consideration to the uses and purposes required by such plan, the restrictions upon, and the covenants, conditions, and obligations assumed by the redeveloper of such property. So that is what we've taken into account and determined that a dollar per parcel was the appropriate value for these, considering the conditions that are included in the purchase agreements and the deed restrictions.
And again, just to clarify, the ones that were, that we earlier considered for the appraised price were not within a redevelopment area?
Or what they were proposing was not, was not...
Was not consistent with what the redevelopment plan called for?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to, I thought that might be an important point to bring up as we discuss more of these that have the same, at least framework that goes around it. You have, you might have different stipulations, deed restrictions as it relates to each one of those, but that in, in essence, gives the basic parameters we're working in for these next few items.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's been a motion and a second, roll call.
Johnson. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 37, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Forever North Real Estate LLC for the sale of six city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on Agenda Item 37 is today. Any proponents or opponents? Please come on down, and then just state your name and address, and state whether you are a proponent or opponent.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Sidney Franklin. I am here as a proponent. My address is 7001 Dodge Street in Omaha. The proposed recipient of these lots plans to construct a series of for-sale housing through a mixed-income model that will be a variety of styles, both detached and attached housing, bungalow styles, that'll be one stories, and two-story townhomes. This is aligned with the Forever North ordinance that City Council passed, I believe, sometime in 2023, and will greatly benefit the objectives of the neighborhood. And so I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 37?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Planning Department, here to answer any questions we have, you have. We also have deed restrictions in this, considering they're for sale for $1. It's they need to start construction within 24 months, completes construction within 42 months, and the buyer needs to construct at least, at least six housing units and sell or lease at least, sell or lease at least 51% of the housing units to qualified households at or below 120% of the median family income.
Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 37?
Joe Fox, Omaha, Nebraska, 461 Hartman Avenue. Forever, Forever North...
Just say whether you're a proponent or opponent.
I am a opponent, sorry, at this time. Given the Omaha 100 and the education that I got just in this council, which I appreciate, I was definitely a proponent of her and her situation. That sounds like a great deal for the city to get housing. But when it regards to 37, Forever North Real Estate LLC is nor a broker or a real estate company. There's not a registered broker in this company, and they're not, they don't own a real estate license. The lawyer that's the agent for this company is going to act as the broker, and they're not a real estate company. I don't know where that would come into play. I know that I found that out in my research, and it just threw me for a loop. This company, Forever North Real Estate LLC, doesn't even have a website or a phone number. They have an address and an agent, and that's an attorney. So I'm just, Omaha 100, very out front, visible, they have a mission statement, you know, the basic, they, they, they're doing what they need to be doing. Forever North Real Estate LLC seems very vague in what they propose to do. Mixed-income housing, the design, you know, I myself would like to see a blueprint or something. I mean, I know that's not my call or anything when it comes to, like, this Forever North Real Estate LLC is not a real estate company, and they don't have a website. I don't even know, they're an active LLC, I'll give them that. They're an active LLC, but other than that, I don't know anything. I haven't heard back from Mark Dosler, their agent. And I'm just confused as to this company doing this, and it's on the same agenda. Not to bring up the Port Authority, but one of these, one of those board members that was appointed an hour or so ago, seems like five hours, I'm sorry, one of those board members that was appointed is involved with this, but not anymore all of the sudden. And these boundaries for the inland port authority go right up to this area, and they will extend eventually. But through my research on item number 37, Forever North Real Estate LLC is not a real estate company, nor is the owner, who will be stated at a later date, isn't a Realtor or a broker. They have an attorney, Mark Dosler, as their agent, and other than that, I know nothing of them. There's nothing of them on the internet for their previous engagements or anything like that. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents or proponents? State your name, address, and state whether you're a proponent or an opponent.
Larry Stewart, 501, 5, Lafayette Avenue, 68132. On number 37, I am an opponent for this reason. I may be confused, but again, not being a lawyer, going onto the website to look at your attachments, don't quite understand a lot of the law fair language. But is Forever North not a tax-accept organization in North Omaha? Or am I confused, is that confused with somebody else? That gets funding from the county, the Douglas County Board, maybe even tax increment financing from this body? And there's a lot of apartments being developed right in that area. It keeps growing, and pretty soon it'll be a campus like the University of Nebraska. But maybe I'm confused, but please point out if that's, if I'm wrong, that that is not the same organization, that they're not getting property tax exemptions, and it's not coming out of my pocket through that or through tax increment financing. I think the citizens would appreciate having that cleared up. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 37? Saying none, public hearings closed. Okay, there's a motion and a second, and Councilwoman Harding, you're recognized.
I had my light on. No, I'm, I'm okay, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Sidney, if you could help Larry in terms of his line of question that he had a few minutes ago there, please?
Sure. What specifically would you like me to address?
He was saying that he was not clear on 75 North structure in terms of it. He said he did something with the lawyer. But, I mean, can you shed, or share with us that the fact that maybe Carmen Tapio is a part of 75 North, and kind of give us a bird's eye view as far as her involvement in the community?
Sure.
Because I think with these, with these lots being a dollar, and the area looking for opportunities to have generational wealth, and they see this lot being sold for a dollar, and then organizations such as 75 North are being presented here today as being the purchaser. It, of course, it's just natural for folks to be somewhat concerned about how that came about. And because there's an interest as to how can they too become that purchaser down the road? So I think that's why we're having these conversations, and it's just an interest, and we're just concerned that, that we have opportunities from a large spectrum versus a small... and we're just concerned that we have opportunities from a large spectrum versus a small spectrum.
So thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Just as a point of clarification, this is in no way affiliated with the nonprofit Seventy-Five North Revitalization Corporation. Forever North Real Estate LLC is a private entity that is acting as a developer in this case. For those that may be unaware, so Carmen Tapio, who is the president and CEO of North End Tele Services, is the executor of this LLC. Her affiliation and connection with Forever North, they are undertaking a large-scale mixed-use development just to the south of these proposed six lots that includes about a hundred units of residential apartments and a four-story mixed-use commercial building. What we're here discussing today on agenda item number thirty-seven is the for-sale portion of this larger multimillion-dollar development, which is important, and through conversations, just, I'm here representing the developer as a commercial broker, but in conversations that I've had over more than a decade in this community, the need for affordable, accessible, high-quality, mixed-income housing that's both rental and for-sale is essential. And so what I'm here representing is one of the many different cogs in fortunately this growing focus in parts of our city, including North Omaha, in not only constructing, but the management of housing for families that come from all walks of life. We do have what some may consider a middle-income or workforce. The state of Nebraska sometimes uses that terminology designation with one hundred and twenty percent median income restriction for fifty percent of the units that are developed, and the other fifty percent will be unrestricted, which is very important that, you know, these plans don't re-concentrate poverty in an area that, you know, historically has struggled there. So that is who Forever North Real Estate LLC is, is a private entity that is acting as a developer in this case, and for this specific project will construct upwards of fifteen units of for-sale housing that will be a combination of bungalow townhome styles that are attached and detached.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no further lights, there's a motion and a second, roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item thirty-eight, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Healing Stone LLC for the sale of two city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on agenda item thirty-eight is today. If you're a proponent or an opponent, please come on up, state your name and address, and state whether you're a proponent or an opponent.
Hi, my name is Terry Porter. I am a proponent for Healing Stone, and if you have any questions, just give me a call, just ask me. The address is four one five four Coming Street.
Thank you, and you're here to answer any questions then?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents or opponents?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, the Planning Department. I'll also point out that these are being sold under community development law, so they do include deed restrictions. That constructions start within twenty-four months, is completed within forty-two months, and that the buyer needs to sell or lease at least four housing units to qualified households at or below eighty percent of the median family income.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda item thirty-eight?
Joe Fox, four-sixty-one Hartman Avenue. I am a proponent of Healing Stone and their mission statement, that is to provide safe, structured living environment-needed resources for women newly released from incarceration. These services are for women re-entering the community in hopes of improving their lives, functioning through offered services, drug and alcohol services, peer support, and the latest in evidence-based care. And I'm very much a proponent in this company and their mission to build these houses for these women, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents for agenda item thirty-eight? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Second, Mr. Harding, Councilman Harding, your light's on. Okay, Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
I'm waiting on someone to second Mr. Harding's motion before I begin speaking.
I did. I already seconded it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm fine.
Will you be the manager of this facility?
Owner, CEO, president.
Okay, and can you tell me a little bit about long-term plans? I understand, what you're doing is a good cause, but I would like to know a little bit more about how you will emerge with that community, things like, you know, security, things like, will there be opportunities for assistance with health benefits? I mean, tell me a little bit more about what you're providing to these women there at your facility.
I'm providing shelter, safety, stability, resources for jobs, how to cope with everyday life, like life skills, things of that nature. As far as moving forward, my purpose is basically to provide permanent homes. There is a need for affordable housing in this community, and I just want to be a part of it and do my part.
So will they stay for, is there, will there be a timeline that they stay, or can-
It's permanent homes.
Oh, these are permanent homes?
Mm-hmm.
And what type of, will they get counseling services, and will you have staff on board?
No, this, okay, so Healing Stone provides temporary services or housing to men and women.
Okay.
It's for actual both. And the problem that they're having now, that I'm seeing in, you know, working with them every single day, is that permitting housing is an issue because of their credit report requirements, things of their nature. They're not able to get apartments with regular, like, restrictions and things of that nature. So I just want to be, you know, part of the community, do my part, make sure that going forward, that they have like a permanent, you know, stable, safe place to be, that's all.
And so how long have you been at this?
Three and a half years.
And so you're enjoying it? Is there anything in the community that any of us in the community can do to help you carry that heavy lift?
I can use all the help. That you're more than welcome to help out in any kind of way, but no, I'm fine. I've had over a hundred and thirty-two women come through my program, and I have a sixty-two success rate percentage. The only thing that's missing is housing.
And are you familiar with the number of churches that's in that area?
Yes.
Yeah, I would encourage you to reach out to them as well to help you with that, but that's, it sounds like a good investment that you're bringing into the area there.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, guys.
Okay, no further lights, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item thirty-nine, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Seleca Development LLC for the sale of two city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item thirty-nine is today. Are there any proponents or opponents? Please come on down, state your name, address, and whether you're a proponent or an opponent.
Hi, my name is Nadja Davis. I'm a proponent. My address is twenty-six eleven Florence Boulevard, six eight one one zero, and I'm here to answer any questions the council may have in regard to the purchase agreement.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda item thirty-nine?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Planning Department. So this is one of two purchase agreements with this proposed buyer. These are being sold at appraised value, but as you would see, the appraised value is lower than some others when we dug into it a little bit deeper. It's like I mentioned before, the comps were a little bit different. They were using land bank, other properties with stipulations on their sales as comps, so we thought it was appropriate to include the terms of starting construction and ending construction within that timeframe, completing within the forty-eight months. So we thought it was appropriate to add that stipulation, given that these are similar comp and conditions that the appraiser used on these appraisals. Here to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents for agenda item thirty-nine? Seeing none. Second, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
I have a question for Ms. Johnson. Johnson, is it Johnson, Doherty?
Johnston Dorsey.
Okay. Johnson Dorsey. This is just general information. I know that the Davis had submitted a request for that area quite some time ago. They two were some of the individuals that were impacted that we were talking about earlier when Autumn, before Autumn left. And I'm just curious, is it, should they have qualified for the dollar opportunity as well?
Unfortunately, not. There is not a redevelopment plan for these properties. Ironically, looking at an entire block, they're getting five properties in total. Two, these two are not in a redevelopment plan area. The redevelopment plan actually split the block, so the other three parcels they're acquiring are within a redevelopment plan, and we can sell those under community development law. So that's the difference, one of the differences in these two purchase agreements.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, that's good information to identify the distinction between the two situations. Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, no further lights, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item forty, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Seleca Development LLC for the sale of three city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on agenda item forty is today. Are there any proponents or opponents?
Nadja Davis again, proponent, twenty-six eleven Florence Boulevard, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one zero.
Here to answer any questions?
Yes, here to answer any-
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Omaha Planning Department. So similar to some of our others, we include in deed restrictions. They need to start construction within twenty-four months, complete construction within forty-two months. Another difference between this and their prior purchase agreements is we have CDBG dollars invested in this property, and so we've also included an deed restriction that they need to sell or lease at least fifty-one percent of the constructed units to households at or below eighty percent of the median family income for five years, and that is a CDBG restriction with, since we have those funds invested. Here to answer any other questions you may have.
Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda item forty? Okay, no other proponents or opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more lights, roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item forty-one, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Spencer Management CDC for the sale of six city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on agenda item forty-one is today. If there's any proponents or opponents for agenda item forty-one, please come on down, state your name, address, and whether you're a proponent or an opponent.
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Planning Department. The proposed buyer had to leave the meeting unfortunately. He did send a statement, says Spencer Management CDC is a nonprofit community development company looking to construct twenty-two affordable rental units for median-income families. Our goal is to transform this area into a livable space where families can thrive and grow. And I would comment that that's, the twenty-two units is over these next two purchase agreements. I know we're under forty-one, but forty-two is also for Spencer Management CDC as well, just to clarify. And Kelly Johnston Dorsey, here to answer any questions you may have. Considering these are being sold for a dollar under community development law, we do have stipulations in the deeds that they start construction within twenty-four months, complete within forty-two months, and that with agenda item forty-one, that the buyer must sell or lease at least five housing units to qualified households at or below one hundred and twenty percent of the median family income. And that's just, again, for this first purchase agreement for Spencer Management CDC. Here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda item forty-one?
Joe Fox, four-sixty-one Hartman. At this time, I'm an opponent, I was hoping to see maybe Justin here from Spencer Management to explain what his plans are going forward. I looked into his company, I don't know if it's like a conflict of interest, he owns a construction company to build him. I just wanted to see if they were always going to remain rental units, or at some time they would be sold to the thing. So at this time, without him being there, without him being here, I know the meeting ran long, I'm going to reach out to him, but at this time, just not knowing if it's just always going to be rental units at this time, you know what I'm saying? So guess I kind of confused you guys, but yeah, I was really hoping that Justin would be here to clarify some of that stuff, but at this time, I'm an opponent. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda item forty-one? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Second, there's no lights? No lights? All right, roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item forty-two, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Spencer Management CDC for the sale of seven city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item forty-two is today. If there's any proponents or opponents, please come forward for agenda item forty-two.
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Omaha Planning Department. Justin Moore indicated again that he had to leave the meeting early, he had to go pick up his daughter. He intends to construct twenty-two affordable rental units for median-income families. Considering these are being sold under community development law, we do have deed restrictions included, that they must start construction within twenty-four months, complete within forty-two. We do also have CDBG dollars invested in these properties, and so we are, he will conform with community development block grant requirements by selling or leasing at least fifty-one percent of the constructed units to households at or below eighty percent of the median income for a minimum of five-year affordability period. Here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda item forty-two? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Second, roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item forty-three, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Holy Name Housing Corporation for the sale of five city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item forty-three is today, and invite all proponents and opponents to come on up.
Good evening, Matthew Kavanaugh, Executive Director, Holy Name Housing Corporation, forty-three twenty-four Fort Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one one. I'll address both item forty-three and forty-four together, just, but I'll be happy to speak on that later, just that they've been bifurcated for the same reason you've heard before, the CDBG dollars are in one of them. So we're acquiring a total of seven lots for a number of different projects. Nineteen oh one Pinkney is a single standalone lot that'll fall under some of our single-family infill projects. We'll construct a single-family affordable home that will either be built for sale under financing we have currently on hand, or possibly put into a future project for one of our long-term rent-to-own projects. The other two are larger sites and- The other two are larger sites, and they will be the location ideally for future iterations of senior housing, bungalow-style townhomes. They're both adjacent to existing bungalows homes, projects that came through council just recently. So we'll probably do a second phase of that. So that would be permanent rental housing for senior citizens. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Planning Department. On Item Number 43, considering we're selling under a community development law, we have the deed restrictions. Start construction within 24 months, can substantially complete in 42 months, and that the buyer must sell or lease at least five housing units to qualified households at or below 120% of the median family income. Here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 43?
Larry Stewart, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I'm opposed to this, again, for some of the same reasons I mentioned earlier. But as I recall from being in these chambers for quite a few times and over a few years, that Holy Name Housing has been here many, many times, has received many, many grants of property tax exemptions, and maybe even tax increment financing on some projects. I made a comment the other day that, you know, maybe I should form a 501(c)(3), ask for TIF financing, and pay myself one hell of a salary, and make a living that way. Because it's not only deductible, but it's maybe even tax exempt. And I can hide a lot of stuff under the tax exemption. This is not just against Holy Name, it's against the principle of all of that, and how it's done, and how it's not explained in simple, everyday language to the citizens of Omaha. That there's a lot of people in that chain of doing all of that they are doing, that's making money through all of that somehow. And maybe they're not paying the kind of taxes and property taxes that we citizens have to pay. So it's not altogether wise. It's wise on their part to maybe shelter income, but not on the taxpayers that have to make up the difference on property taxes. And Mr. Will Goodwilly from the assessors office still did not answer the question that, does Holy Name ever pay property taxes on a property? If there's not a house on it, it's still a property. People pay value taxes on the land value. Do they, or do they not ever pay it? Or do they just pass it on to whoever they sell it to? I think the implication is that the buyer of that house that lives in it, that gets help, and special help, will pay property taxes, but maybe not completely all of it. But the implications were, and I'd like to answer, does Holy Name ever pay property tax on any of those properties while they're in development, or after?
Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 43? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
President, Mr. Kavanaugh, you don't have to get up, but I appreciate you sitting here all day. It's been a long day, but I, since you're the only Kavanaugh here, my favorite Kavanaugh, you can tell your brother to the senator that. But thanks for all the work you continue to do with Holy Name Housing for affordable housing in our community. And as I've said often, I hope we can put you out of business one day that we don't need it. But it's in desperate need, and I applaud the work you continue to do. So thanks for being here today. And I'll tip my hand that I'm gonna support 43 and 44. Thanks, Madam President.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion on 43.
Okay. And I just have, Mr. Kavanaugh, if you could just stand up, because there's an allegation that you, the Holy Name doesn't pay any taxes on any properties ever. And I just wanted to give you a chance to address that.
Sure, yeah, happy to. Happy to clarify that. So the State Supreme Court made clear a few years ago that affordable housing in and of itself is not a property tax exempt activity under tax law, provided by nonprofit entities. So we do, in fact, pay property taxes at the same rate. There is, there are some distinctions or nuances to that under the Section 42, which is the low-income housing tax credit program that has a standalone distinction under state property tax law, where it pays a slightly lower property tax levy. But all the lots we own, we pay standard property tax, whether they are in our inventory, whether they're under construction, whether they're owned and operated as affordable housing. We do, in fact, we do not pay property tax on our office building, because in addition to providing affordable housing, we also provide additional support services and other community support activities that qualify under broader nonprofit entities that, so that the office itself, which houses not just the activities of affordable housing development, but also the other support service activities, is exempt under property tax. So we pay an awful lot of property taxes, is the short answer.
All right. Well, I think that's very important. And you do provide other services. I want to thank you for taking my call the other night, when I knew I had flood victims that were in need of housing and questions that needed to be answered. And you took my call right away, and provided, you and Aaron provided some suggestions, and donated clothing, pack-and-play, and baby items to people that lost their homes in the flooding. So I know you also walk your talk. And I think what you do is great. And so I definitely support what Holy Name does. And thank you.
Thank you.
So there's no further lights. Roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 44, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with Holy Name Housing Corporation for the sale of two city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 44 is today. Are there any proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 44?
Matthew Kavanaugh, Executive Director, Holy Name Housing Corporation, 4324 Fort Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. So, yeah, not to belabor it, this, the only distinction is this has additional CDBG restrictions under it. We're not concerned about those restrictions. The services, the housing that we intend to provide will more than meet those requirements. So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 44?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Omaha Planning Department. Since these are being sold under community development law, we do have deed restrictions. Start construction in 24 months, complete within 42. And as was mentioned, there is community development block grant funds invested in these properties. So the proposed buyer must sell or lease at least 51% of the constructed units to households at or below 80% of the area median family income. Here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 44? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Seeing no lights? Roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 45, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with North 16th Housing LLC for the sale of two city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 45 is today. Are there any proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 45?
Joe Fox, 461 Omaha, Nebraska. This company, too, is just created January 30. It is an active LLC in the state of Nebraska, domestic LLC.
Mr. Fox, so I don't want to just guess, but are you a proponent or opponent?
Sorry, opponent.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is my first time.
It's okay. I forget things, too.
Yeah, digging into research, this came across my computer when I was looking into a Port Authority candidate, Jacob Hoppe. His address stuck in my mind. I have a very different mind. His address was in my mind, because I was like, wait a minute, that's Lincoln. What's he want to do with the Omaha Inland Port Authority? And then later on, researching these, because I just didn't understand how these properties could go this cheap. And then kinda seeing some people slip through the cracks, in a sense, but other people, like those other companies, like Holy Name, they know what they're doing. This is what it's about. But this situation with this North 16th Housing LLC, it's brand new, it's five months old. The address for this company is the exact same address as Hoppe Development, who Jacob Hoppe is a partner slash employee. Obviously, that's his last name. I just see this as the same thing with the Carmen Tapio situation, as a conflict. These properties may not, at this time, be inside the Port Authority district boundaries, but they are so close, you could call them a stone's throw. And that means profit is gonna be had on these places, two blocks, or a block, or a stone's throw away from the Port Authority district, which they will be a board member of for, four, two, three, whatever the staggered was. And it just, I'm glad it's on this exact same agenda, because I'm not a studied, I don't want to say politician, I don't know. I'm not good at these things. But doing my research on that candidate, or that appointment of that commissioner, I found out that this company is the exact same address, the same suite number and everything, as Hoppe Development. And it's just outside of the Port Authority district by about two blocks, which is about 16th and Lake. You can go up to Florence, but it's just south of Lake Street. And the next item, I'll be back up here again, that's for 11 properties the next one is. So I'd like to hear the constraints on Number 45. And I don't know if I need to come up before her on 46, but I would like to speak again on 46, if and when we hear the constraints on the construction on those properties. It just seems, I don't know what, too close for comfort. A Lincoln company, just created five months ago, very, very close to the timeline of the Port Authority, really getting its legs underneath it and its teeth sharpened. And then now he's in Omaha, purchasing properties for $2. And the next one's is 11 for 32, I mean, that's $3,200 a property, 30, cheap as, cheap as, it's under market value, so I would assume that they have to have restrictions on them. I'll be happy to hear those. But as of Agenda Number Item 45, I am an opponent. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 45?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Omaha Planning Department. It is Jake Hoppe, who was in our meeting earlier today, who represents the proposed buyer. Unfortunately, he had to leave. He did send me a statement to read. And he says, "We intend to purchase these two lots and combine with a lot in between owned by the land bank and create a cohesive multifamily parcel to add affordable housing associated with the redevelopment of Chambers Corp. This lot will be subject to affordability and timeline restrictions." So those are the conclusion of his comments. Since we are selling these properties for $1, because they are in a redevelopment area under community development law, we have the deed restrictions that they start construction in 24 months, they complete within 42 months, and that they must sell or lease at least two housing units to qualified households at or below 120% of the median family income. I will add that they have begun community engagement for this project, as well as the associated redevelopment of Chambers Corp. So here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 45? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Councilman Rowe, you're recognized.
President, I just wanted to speak to the character of Jake Hoppe and Hoppe Development. I've known them for a long time. They are based out of Lincoln. Jake does live in Omaha with his family. They are one of the premier affordable housing developers in the state. They have projects in North Platte, in Columbus, in Fremont, in Omaha, or I guess it's in Papillion, and then in Lincoln. And they do, they know how to get the job done. They know how to manage the properties that they own. And they have high character. I just wanted to speak to that. So appreciate your questions, Joe. They are, they are one of the premier affordable housing developers in the state.
Thank you. Councilman Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Madam President. I'm glad, Mr., is it Hoppe? Is that how you pronounce his last name? I did have a great opportunity to talk to him on Sunday as one of the candidates for the Inland Port Authority. And in addition to the research I did on him, on talking to others, Councilman Rowe, all the notes that I wrote down on him, Councilman Rowe just covered that. And I think, if I was told correctly, he's the largest affordable housing developer in the state of Nebraska. Is that correct? One, he's pretty big, so I, and he lives in my district. I actually walk by his house on my, when I get off the couch and get zipping around the neighborhood by Memorial Park. So I got a lot of respect for not only the conversation I have with him on Sunday from my office, but also the work that I've learned more and more that he does. And I'm supportive of this. And I look forward to seeing the projects he does for affordable housing and helping our community with that. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. While this seems like a good opportunity for District 2, transparency is something that is needed more. I recall a month ago, right here in the City Council, we asked about rezoning on 16th Street. There was some inquiry about doing something on 16th Street. I remember asking the question, what's the intent? Who is the players? Nobody knew the answer to that. It's very clear now that, yes, we did know the answer, we just wasn't willing to share. This community will never grow as long as we hold on to information like dear life, disrespect appointed officials, and elevate and protect community members who live outside of the district. If we really want to impact change in these communities that are underserved, we must, we must do a better job at sharing information. Thank you.
Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
This time, I will say two things, and I'll remember both of them, I think. Obviously, Hoppe has been involved in, and has been in business for a long time. The reason, I'm guessing that the search that was done that showed the business only being in business for a few months is that, I'm sure it's a single-purpose LLC that was set up for the project. So I'll make that assumption. I, I'm sorry, I have to comment on the last comments of Councilmember Johnson. Thinly veiled accusations, I'd really love to hear what you're trying to, what point you're trying to make. What accusation are you trying to make about transparency, or us withholding information from the public related to this project? I'd like to hear that.
Councilman Rowe, you're recognized.
Thanks. I wanted to jump back in here. Just having known the Hoppes for as long as I have, I know that the partner, his father Fred, is a real estate attorney, and I'm sure that's why they created that LLC. I'm sure they have many, depending on the part of the state or where their project is. But Jake, I can tell you, I think he's one of the most, he's one of the most engaging developers that we've worked, that I've worked with, as far as community engagement, talking to the neighbors, talking to council members, and sharing, you know, what his plan, what his plans really are. We did, I will tell you, just a, just a great feel-good story. Competition is fierce in the real estate market. It's just, it's a tough business to be in. I'm sure even in affordable housing. But Don Coleman, and I'm sure that he won't care that I say this, but he was a developer, a young developer, that came before us a few months ago, with some projects on, I think, North 16th Street, and was having some challenges with getting across the finish line, understanding how the whole development process worked, the construction process, working with subcontractors, and labor in the city, and all those kinds of things. Jake found out that Don had two properties, really close to these properties that he's talking about. And properties really close to these properties that he's talking about. And he reached out to Don Coleman and said, "Hey, I understand you want to get into the business. I'll be glad to mentor you, help you understand the process." He didn't look at him as a competitor. He looked at him as somebody who was trying to make a difference in affordable housing. And he is that big of a proponent of affordable housing, he was willing to take his personal time to help a competitor, to be better, to do a good job in that, in that development area. So again, I think that speaks to the character of the Hoppys, both Jake and his father Fred, and the employees that they employ. Again, they're, probably are the largest affordable housing developer in the state, and they do a good job.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
A few months back, we had, again, the question was 16th Street. There was an item on the agenda that spoke to the request of rezoning, which we voted in favor of. There were questions in the discussion that talked about vague discussion about who or what was going to be developed there. There was in the window that no one knew why we needed to rezone. We just thought it was a great grandiose idea to do so. And now we have a development. Transparency is important, especially when you are serving an underserved community. Stop with the secret deals. They don't help poverty. I don't know how clearer I can get in my statement in terms of what my concern is. We elevate those that are providing a service, a good, goods and services in underserved community. Those individuals that provide those goods and services many times do not live in North Omaha. They do not live there. There was a comment earlier today about the transaction of a dollar, how long it stays in that community. And that's one of the reasons why our community is not excelling. We can spend all the dollars, bring in all the developers, bring in all of the helpers, and all of that. They just simply place a bandage on the problem because you're not asking the people that you are claiming that you want to help. You're not having them at the table. You're not including them in the discussion. And when development is being done off the backs of the federal government, they're not included to be told that these services are being provided. That's what I mean by transparency. Be more open about what our intent are. Thank you.
Thanks. And I'm just going to jump in here because, for purposes of transparency, the LLC is named North 16th. However, you mentioned that we did zoning on 16th Street. I just want to note, these properties are on 18th Street, so they have nothing to do with 16th Street. I mean, I don't know why the Hoppys named their LLC 16th Street. I don't know the developers. I do know their lawyer, Jim Hoppy, who is, different Hoppies? Okay. So I was going to say, I only know the lawyer that's a Hoppy, but I don't know these developers. But I, I would like to say that I also trust the character when I hear Councilman Begley, Councilman Rowe, Councilman Harding, who know what they do and know the development that they do. And I hear how much affordable housing they do all over the state of Nebraska, because we have affordable housing needs here, but the affordable housing needs do, go all the way to the Colorado border. So it's great to hear that we don't have, these are developers that aren't just staying right in the urban areas, and that they're extending themselves out. Because we are one state, we need to make sure we're not just focusing on our own, on our own city. So I just, for purposes of being clear, I just wanted to make that clear. These properties are on 18th Street. So I don't believe there are any hidden deals or hidden zoning changes. So, thank you. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks for pointing that out. And I am going to blabber this a little bit because Councilmember Johnson sits there and says she can't be clearer about what she's talking about, but she hasn't given us any exact addresses or the case that she's talking about. All she's done is made, continues to make failed threats. I'm assuming it's against this developer, against the Hoppys, and that's totally irresponsible and not what this body should be doing. So if you have specifics, Councilmember Johnson, I think you owe it to the people as well as the Hoppys about what your concern is specifically.
Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Again, I'm going to attempt to be clear. Threat, we use that word so fluidly, as statement of intention to inflict pain, injury, damage, or other hostile action on someone. Neither of what I did today. So I'm going to disregard the word threat that was said that I did and act as though I didn't hear it. Actually, it just went in the garbage can. We have a record. We know how to go and look up what we did regarding rezoning on 16th Street. I don't have to give anyone a case number. We had that conversation here at this body about 16th Street and where I, this is in my district, and I have every reason to want to know what's going on, what's going to happen tomorrow. And I was given answers that were vague. They weren't transparent. And now we know what's going on on 16th Street. Ms. Melton continues to point out 18th Street. I know the difference on 18th Street, given the fact that I live in District 2, whereby she lives in District 7. So I'm clear about what I'm talking about. So, again, this body voted to rezone on 16th Street, and there was no information provided as to what would happen with the development there and who would be doing the development. Now, months later, we're, the cover is being revealed. Thank you.
Councilman Hug, you're recognized.
Councilmember Johnson, I, I'm sitting here, and I honestly, I don't recall any zoning issue on North 16th Street. But you are right, we do have records, and we do have the clerks here. So maybe, what was this last week, the week before? Could you nail it down to weeks? And we'll have the clerks pull up the agenda so we can see what specific address it was. And we have Dave Fanslaw from Planning, and we can ask him to comment on it. Because I'm, I'm drawing, I'm drawing a blank on which zoning issue we're talking about.
As, and just, I want to make sure that we're talking about agenda item 45, and we're, because when you say zoning issues on 16th, agenda item 25 is in regards to property located at 2203 North 18th, 18th Street, and 2213 North 18th Street. So let's keep our discussion on these two properties on 18th Street.
There is one address in that list that is on North 16th Street, the second to the last address.
Okay, well, that's on agenda item 46. So, and do we have any more comments on agenda item 45? Mr. Councilman Hug, I didn't mean to cut you off. You still have the floor if you would like it.
Well, Madam Chair, the point I was trying to get at, and I appreciate you hearing me out, the point I was trying to get at was to kind of address Councilman Johnson's concerns that there was some potential conflict here. I guess she's trying to say that some issue with the zoning on 16th Street where we allegedly were not told who wanted the zoning and why we wanted the zoning. I don't recall that at all. And so I was just offering in a way to kind of resolve that for us all. If the clerks could just, if Councilman Johnson could nail it down to a week or a-
The clerk's office is not able to do any investigation because we are currently in an open meeting. So the clerk will have to remain here and conduct this meeting. If the, if anybody would like to request that of the clerk after this meeting, I'm sure the city clerk would abide by that and get it back to everyone in a timely manner. But it, it won't be this evening.
Would it, would it be, would it be in order, and would Mr. Fanslaw be willing to comment at this time? Or would you need time to look into it? Do you recall anything?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. I'd need time to look into it.
Okay.
We talk about a lot of things. I answer a lot of questions. I can assure this body that every question I answer is honest and accurate. So, other than that, I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you.
Councilman Begley, you're recognized.
I, I'm going to just put on my old OPBD hat, and my old days as a meter reader. I think everybody's right on this. It is on 16th Street, and those apartments go to 18th Street, if I remember correctly, from 30 years ago. So I, I'll just put that out there. It, you can go from the 18th Street side to get in there and the 16th Street side. And those addresses, they seem a little goofy to me 30 years ago, and that's why those streets don't go through there. But you can hit it from both sides and enter from the west and the east. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. No further lights. There's been a motion and a second roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Begley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 46, a resolution to approve the real estate purchase agreement with North 16th Housing LLC for the sale of 11 city-owned parcels. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on agenda item 46 is today. Are there any proponents or opponents?
Kelly Johnston Dorsey, Planning Department. As mentioned before, Mr. Hoppy had to leave. I will read a statement on his behalf. "We intend to purchase these lots and combine with adjacent lots assembled to create a set of cohesive multifamily parcels to add both affordable housing and market-rate housing associated with the redevelopment of Chambers Court. We intend to ensure that subsequent development serves a variety of income levels consistent with feedback we have received from the community." Wow, that's the end of his statement. "While we are selling these for appraised value, as mentioned before in previous cases, the comps used on this had strings attached with the sale of those properties, so we thought it was appropriate to include in a deed restriction that the buyer must construct at least 11 housing units, and they need to do so within 48 months." This is the set of, this purchase agreement does include the property on 16th Street that was mentioned. When we, prior to selling city-owned property, we look at the zoning, and if it's not appropriate, not consistent with the master plan, we rezone it. I believe, best to my recollection, this was zoned general commercial, which allows a lot of uses that are not, that would be great for the community. So we took the opportunity to downzone the property. There is a chance that all of these properties will come back for rezoning. I believe it was true, and no one knew what, how the property would be used in the future because Mr. Hoppy is currently engaging in community engagement. I believe he's met with you or emailed you at least four times, Councilwoman Johnson. We had indicated to you back in January that Hoppy Development was the proposed buyer for these properties, so I don't think there was any intention on hiding or not being transparent with the process. So I will just offer that here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents on agenda item 46? Seeing none, public hearings closed. And Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk, just thank everyone for being so incredibly interested in what's going on in North Omaha. Now, let's address poverty, let's address transportation, let's, let's address equal access, equal opportunity, let's use the same amount of energy that we do with development to this same area. And I would be happy, I would be jumping for joy. Thank you.
No further lights, roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Begley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 50, a resolution to approve the bid award from Creative Outdoor Advertising of America to provide bus bench maintenance and advertising throughout the city of Omaha.
The public hearing on agenda item number 50 is today or tonight, I may say. Any proponents or opponents? Please come on down, state your name, address, and whether you're a proponent or an opponent.
Trillity Wade, 5073 Jackson, Omaha, 68106. I'm here as a representative of Safe Omaha Streets and as a public transit user. I'm not speaking necessarily against Creative Outdoor Advertising of America so much as I'm speaking about my concerns with the contract language. My concerns stem from the fact that, from the fact that last year, our organization did a road safety audit on 72nd Street, and we had, we received nearly 100% negative feedback on the bus benches. We received notices that bus benches were broken, tipped over, surrounded by trash, and some were located illegally. Audit participants at the time blamed Metro for that, but as you guys all know, it's not Metro who's responsible for the bus benches. The bus benches are actually the responsible of a third, responsibility of a third-party contractor under the City of Omaha Parks Department with a contract under the City of Omaha Parks Department that they award. I have three concerns. The first one is trash. Trash around bus stops is a consistent and documented problem in the city. Trash and litter are issues of health, aesthetics, and respect for riders. Last year, when I was trying to learn more about this, I talked to Steve Slater with the city, and I was trying to understand more about how this contract works, since I didn't understand how many hands were involved in it. He let me know that last year's contractor, they maintained trash by, through a complaint-based, like someone would complain and they would pick up the trash, but they were not required to maintain the surrounding area on any sort of regular scheduled basis. He did let me know, quote, "That maintaining the areas surrounding the benches will be a criteria that will be evaluated by the review committee for the current request for a proposal," end quote. So I was expecting some sort of criteria in that in the contract. The contract is still complaint-based, and the only caveat is that if trash and litter are a chronic problem, then the contractor will bring a plan to the city to mollify the situation or correct the situation. I can guarantee you that trash will continue to be a problem, and I believe there should be some sort of more oversight, responsibility, or accountability regarding keeping the bus benches free of trash and litter as, better than what's written in there right now. Second, regarding inspection and maintenance of the benches, the contract reads, "All bus benches shall be regularly inspected and maintained by the contractor to be in a clean and safe condition." The phrase regularly inspected is vague. I don't know if that's quarterly, monthly, or annually. I'd love if there was language that was tightened or clarified on that in the contract. Third, regarding any bus bench complaints, the contract depends on the contractor being notified of issues by the city, the metro bus using traffic, or any other person or entity. So the contractor is the sole owner and sole entity responsible for maintaining those benches. I believe that then they should be easy for people to contact. I would recommend that the contractor's contact info be posted on all bus benches if possible, so people know where to complain in real time. If this is already standard practice, then it should be written into the contract language. Since the new contractor is located in Florida, and the last contractor was local, the new contractor does say they will work primarily with local independent businesses, but it would be interesting to know if the public could also have those businesses contact, or whoever we need to contact for issues of complaints. My concerns are mainly about oversight and accountability and getting ahead of any problems, because before last year, I, as I think most of Omaha, thought that there was one entity who had control and had their hands in the bus benches, which a lot of people thought was Metro and/or the city. But instead, there are multiple entities with their hands on the benches. There's the Parks Department, the contractor, the contractor's contractor, the- There's the Parks Department, the contractor, the contractor's contractor, the advertisers, and Metro. So I believe this is an important issue and that the clearer and more detailed the contract is, the easier it will be for everyone to enjoy those bus benches. And what we have to remember is bus benches are a visual representation of the city of Omaha, not just to public transit users, but to motorists, pedestrians, and visitors. And we want to make sure it's a good representation because they really do look terrible in a lot of areas. Um, and even though the city doesn't sign a check to the contractor because the contractor is essentially paying the city, um, I still think that we need to have some sort of city oversight to make sure that that infrastructure is nice. So. Sorry, I've been here a really long time. So if I flew through that, not my best public speaking, but thank you. So yeah. That was opponent, but not against the contractor themselves, just the contract language.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda item fifty?
Steve Slater, Omaha Parks, 1819 Farnum Street, Contractual Services Supervisor, uh, here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you for coming down, Steve. Are there any other proponents or opponents? Okay, let's do these and then, don't let me forget.
Good afternoon.
And to the, one second, to the Zoom people, we, we have not forgotten about you. We will get to you after we get everybody in here. So thank you for holding on.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Paulson. I own and operate Best Buy Signs and the Omaha Bus Bench Program. Our address is 17410 Storage Road, Omaha, Nebraska, 68136. I have quite a bit of items to share, but I, I don't know if you want me to start right away or if you'd like to hear from the other opponents or proponents first.
This is your time. So I, if you give it up, you may not get it, you may not get any time later. So I'd give, I'd give us everything you want.
I need to share.
Best you can.
I need to share a document with the, with the seven council members.
You can hand it to the clerk here.
Yes, please. Omaha council members, Best Buy Signs has been serving Omaha for 35 years. For the last 14 years, Best Buy Signs managed, has managed the Omaha Bus Bench Advertising Program. Best Buy Signs has earned the right to manage and, manage the program by providing the best and highest proposal each time the contract is renewed. Under Mel, uh, under Matt Kalasek, I apologize, I don't know how your name is, uh, the latest RFP process has been turned on its head. The Director of the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Public Property made calculated decisions to delay, manipulate, and edit the bid process. I asked the city council, uh, city council members table the vote scheduled for today, June 4th, 2024, and assign a proper oversight to review Matt's failures and to confirm the outcome as soon as possible. Violations made to the, to the Nebraska Code Ordinance 361, 362, 365J, 366, 367, along with insufficient changes of circumstances to reject the first RFP that went out. In addition, we believe that benches, believe the benches proposed by Creative Outdoor Advertising America do not meet the ordinance requirements and they should have been disqualified from the, from the start. Matt's disregard towards the city ordinance which governs the program has left Best Buy Signs in limbo for 16 months, which has caused stress on all fronts of our business and personal lives. I'm requesting in writing, I, I've requested in writing multiple times to discuss with Matt, but have been turned down in writing. None of this should, I don't believe any of this should be aired here. I think I should have had the courtesy to sit down after working for 14 years and have a discussion with the people involved. I guess that you pause the vote today and investigate the behavior, um, before irreparable harm is done to my business. I'd like to read, read on. Matt's, uh, my entire business is at risk of imminent closure only because Matt Kalasek is not following the ordinance that governs this program. Our city public, our city's public document page under the title, "City of Omaha Municipal Code," the municipal code is defined as follows. The municipal code is the document that is the formation on how the city of the Omaha, City of Omaha government is chartered and run. Matt is asking you to approve a resolution in front of you. I do not want any of the city council members or the mayor to be part of approving this illegitimate resolution. I believe that the ma, I believe if Mayor Sother knew upfront about the ordinance violations, she wouldn't have recommended the approval today. Let's start with ordinance 3-61, Declaration of Necessity. It is hereby declared necessary, an expedition for the convenience of the public. The city agreement expired back on May 31, 2023. 362A requires the director, no later than February 1st of 2023, to submit bid specifications to the city council and that the city council approve the bid specification by resolution. I have not found in public record that this has occurred. Has any of the city, can, can that be confirmed now? Has the city council approved the specifications related to this that are required under the ordinance? Did you submit those to city council for approval?
You can only direct your comments to us and we don't answer.
Were they submitted to city council?
We, we don't do a back and forth, so we don't answer any questions.
I just, I would like to know, you were submitted the specifications for your approval that are required? No? Okay. How about the second RFP that went out? I don't, I don't believe those have been turned in either. 363A, the purchasing agent shall submit a bid tabulation related correspondence and the city council by resolution except the highest and best bid. The tabulation sheet that's included in the documents attached to this meeting today shows zeros on the tabulation. Best Buy Signs, um, Best Buy Signs number was $100,200. Creative Outdoor was $100,000. 365J require periodic maintenance by contractor. Matt, without changing the ordinance, is on, is requiring demand services for this contract without changing the ordinance. 366B, benches must weigh 400 pounds. 366C, they must be made of, the legs must be made of concrete or si, or solid metal. Matt is ignoring these requirements in the, in the proposal right in front of you without amending the ordinance. I ask the city council to lay over this vote until a later date so we can talk, uh, to the city attorney and try to resolve these problems. So my complaint isn't about missing a bid. I've worked very, very hard to do what we can. But this is about following the rules, being timely, not risking putting a business that has been in, in Omaha for 35 years out of business because we're not going to follow our own rules. We've been waiting 16 months, reached out to Matt in writing, refused to talk to us. I have those documents here too, where I've reached out to the department. The program isn't, is, is probably one of the only programs that I am aware of that is controlled by a city ordinance. The city ordinance does not get enough attention because it comes up every four to eight years. I think that the ordinance needs to be rewritten and started over myself. I think there needs to be more cooperation between Metro. Metro has buses running to most locations every 15 minutes. Inside those buses are trash cans. I've, I've spoke with the previous director and he says, "We're not, we're not, we're not taking in trash because our drivers," and this is what he told me, "our drivers don't want to mess with it." So there is a solution to the trash. We've not been able to clearly talk about it. We have suggestions. We have not been able to come to the table. This agenda of Matt is, I think it's embarrassing when you break five or six different ordinance rules. And I just hope that we can get it straightened out. I believe that's everything.
Okay. Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda item fifty?
Madam President, Members of the Council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. So this is a contract being presented to you in relation to a posted RFP. We worked closely with the Purchasing Department and our Legal Department to present the information that we did publicly and to come to this point today with our potential, uh, selected contractor who's here to represent themselves. Certainly there were a lot of accusations and information thrown around. I'll respond to potential council inquiries here in a moment if there are any. Certainly happy to answer any of the questions. I'll offer the opportunity now to connect with our vendor who's been waiting here, potential vendor for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents or opponents?
Louisiana 2709 Dewey Avenue. Two things about, uh, the park benches is that-
Proponent or opponent?
Opponent, yeah. Because, uh, I don't think the, these two focus areas are well-kept, which is, somebody brought it up, trash in the area of the benches and, uh, the uses of the benches pertaining to the bus system. Uh, the drivers will ignore people who are sitting and that I've no, um, it's happened to me. It's happened throughout the years that I've been using the bus system. Drivers, uh, demand that, uh, the, you must be standing by the bus stop sign. That's difficult to do, uh, always because it depends where you are, you know, which stop you're dealing with. I think that needs to be in the contract with, uh, Metro that the drivers have to recognize the, uh, the usage of the benches as, uh, pertaining to people wanting to get on the bus system. And then, uh, that's not a difficult thing to deal with, nor is the trash. There's a bu, bus stop on 24th and, uh, Farnum. And all I did was position the trash can, uh, where it wasn't on the actual sidewalk and it was used. And it, to this day, um, the area is clean. You know, I don't know if people are putting recycle in the recycling side and the trash in the trash side, but it's not on the ground. So I, I think that, uh, focusing on those two things will provide quality to the execution of the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other proponents or opponents?
Hi there. My name is Lily Paulson and I would be an opponent of this other company that is coming up for possible bid. Um, my, like I said, my name is Lily Paulson. Address is 1502 South 80th Street, uh, 68124. Um, I've not only watched my parents run this, this bus bench program for 14 years, but I've seen the hard work that they put into it. Multiple late calls, multiple situations where they're going out late at night to survey or check on bus benches. So I know that, um, a big point that has been brought up, I've never been to a city council meeting. I feel like this gentleman back here in the red said, "I've never been here before." But some big points that I've heard about today, specifically from you, I love listening to you, um, were transparency, secret deals, and timelines. None of those things have been followed in regards to this contract. There have been secret deals, there have been 16 months' worth of delayed timelines, and, um, just overall, no transparency. And as somebody that has been a small business, as Omaha is, keep local alive, keep it everything, you're wanting to outsource to Florida in regards to taking that on. So just some really big points that I think need to be thought about before any decision comes to a, to a close today. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda item fifty? Oh, thank you.
Almost there. Joe Fox, 461 Hartman Avenue. On this thing, I am an opponent of a new contractor coming in here and doing this job. Uh, it seems like there's a lot left on the table to be discussed, investigated, proven right or wrong. To move to a foreign business that isn't registered in this state like that, to take a guy's business that's been alive and thriving in this city and has been there for you guys for 35 years and then ignore him for 16 months? Seems very awful and I can only imagine the hardship his family has dealt with. I've been dealing with this city council and this city like this for several months, maybe seven. And it stresses me out to no end. To know that somebody's been dealing with Matt Kalsovich for 16 months, I feel for them. I'm an opponent of a new contractor coming in, especially when it means taking Omaha business out of Omaha. These are our bus benches. This is our bus route. Who knows? This might be your mayor's streetcar signage guy. Keep him in-house. Keep it local. Goes back to the dollar spent in North Omaha last three days. Keep the money being made here, spent here. Don't outsource a job, is, it's a, it seems like a family-run business to a, a foreign business out of Florida. This company is, is big, Creative Outdoor, too big. Keep Best Buy Signs, figure out what your guys' differences were, come to an agreement, and move on to do what this is. This is point blank as of number fifty, item number. You're giving this contract to a company that doesn't live or work in this city and you're taking it away from somebody that lives and works inside this city. That's why I'm an opponent of number fifty. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents or opponents that are in the chambers right now? All right, we're going to move on to Zoom. Um, let's see, do we want to call up, uh, Mr. Apostolopoulos? I hope I pronounced that right. All right, we're going to get you off mute here. Okay, I think you're off mute. Just state your name and, and your address and thanks for hanging on for so long. Uh-oh, can we hear him? Hold on one second. I don't, not sure that we can hear you. Can you try talking, state your name? Hold on. Do you have maybe a volume button that you could turn up? We, we can't hear anything you're saying. Can you say, can you hear us? Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. Okay, he can't hear us either. Oh, thumbs up? Okay, so you can hear me. We can't hear you. Nope, we still can't hear you. Let, how about this? We're going to try Mark and see if you can maybe find a volume button or something, microphone button on your end that you can turn on. And we're going to go to Mark Oosterholt. Mark, are you there?
Hi, it's actually Lynn Terlaga. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, and I'm really sorry, Lynn, I'm sorry, it was what was on the screen, Lynn Terlaga. Thank you.
No worries.
All right, well, why don't you state your name and address and tell us whether you're a proponent or an opponent?
Uh, Lynn Terlaga, 1981 Faithon Lane in Reno, Nevada. And I am a proponent. I actually work for Creative Outdoor.
Okay. And did, do you have any, anything else to add as to why you're a proponent or what your company would do?
Uh, yeah, I think Mark, uh, Mark is going to answer those questions as soon as we get his, um, uh, his, uh, volume figured out.
Well, I think that's John. John is the one that we're trying to get the- Well, I think that's John. John is the one that we're trying to get the volume figured out.
Oscar Hall. I don't know how our names got switched around. Mark, can you?
Okay. We're going to try John or Mark. Say something again.
Did that work?
Yes.
Louder though, a lot louder.
Yeah, if you could speak kind of a lot louder and then tell us what your name and address is, and I'm going to assume you're a proponent.
Yes, so my name is Mark Oosterholt. I am a proponent. I'm from 8875 Hidden Valley, or excuse me, Hidden River Parkway, Tampa, Florida, 33637. And I just want to answer any questions that maybe the council may have. Just to tell you a little bit about COA, so we've been in business for almost 40 years. As some of the people mentioned, we, yes, we are a big company. We have partnerships with over 300 different municipalities all across North America. And we treat this business, we will have local staff who will be managing and making sure that everything looks in tip-top shape every single month. We have an electronic scanning system. So what our operators do when they visit a bench is they will actually scan the unit. And then you will be able to see, you'll be able to log in in real time and see exactly when the person was there, what jobs they completed, et cetera. And you will have full access to our maintenance records, so you'll know everything that we've done maintenance-wise, whether it's trash pickup or just graffiti or just regular maintenance visit. You will be able to see all that information.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other proponents or opponents on Zoom. Are there any other proponents or opponents that haven't spoke yet that are here in the gallery? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Madam President. So that's Mark on the top left there. That's not John, correct?
Yes, they registered with the incorrect name.
That's all right. No, I got it. I'm straight. So Ms. Wade, thanks for staying. Is she still behind there?
I'm over here.
Okay. Hi, hey, thanks for staying. It's been a long day for all of us, but this is an important issue. So I appreciate the email that you sent and all the work you do for Safe Omaha Streets. I'm going to try to get a couple of answers for the emails. I got a few of these. And Ms. Wade's, so I guess maybe I'll direct this maybe to Matt. Good evening, Matt.
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director.
So with COA trash pickup, they talk about, help me out here, three foot of the bus bench that they'll pick up trash within, is it within 48 hours?
Yes.
Okay, and what's the current one now? Is that the same standard we got now?
No.
What is it now, right now?
I'll defer to our contract manager, Steve Slater.
Steve Slater, Omaha Parks. There is nothing in the current contract or the expired contract that discusses any regulatory requirement for them to pick up trash.
Okay.
When they, when they're at a site or when they, we call him or somebody calls them, they will dispatch to go out and do it.
Okay, so Ms. Wade, I believe, asked, how do we call? So I, I see John, and I'm going to be even worse than Madam President on, John Apostolopoulos.
It's actually Mark. They just had the wrong name.
No, I know, but I'm looking on, on the, the printout that I had. It has John's name in Tampa and then an email. So if there's trash at the locations, it's complaint-driven, correct?
Yes, that, they would work with their local response team.
Okay, and how, that was one of the questions I had. How do they, they're not going to call John in Florida whose number's on here. How will, if somebody of Tri-Lity, Ms. Wade, or anybody is driving by and the bus bench is tipped over or there's graffiti or trash, how does Joe Public or Jane Public notify to get this cleaned up?
I'll, I'll defer to our potential contractor to talk more about their approach that they presented.
Fair enough. Mark, can you, did you hear my question? Oh, we can't hear you now.
Unmute again?
Am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so what, on every single bench, we will have what we call is a signature panel, which has our name, phone number, and our website. So they have many options. They can call it into us. And then what happens is, as soon as it gets called in or gets reported to us, they will put in a work order, which gets sent directly to our person. What each of our maintenance team has is a, what we call is a scanner. It's basically a piece of electronic equipment that when they go to the bench, they scan the bench. And that's how we know we've been, they've been there and how long they were there and so on. So as soon as the work order gets entered, it pops up on their scanner and tells them, oh, there's garbage or trash at this location and you need to go out there and take care of that. So it's a very simple process.
Okay, what would the turnaround time be for that, once it's reported to you?
So as per the contract, it would be a minimum of 48 hours. However, very often, we will be able to action our crews faster, especially if it's a bad situation. We will definitely have our people there quicker than that.
Now, one thing I'll add is certainly the bus benches are potentially what we're calling the magnet for trash. One of the things that is, the situation is sometimes there's trash around that is the responsibility of the property owner, not necessarily us providing the bus benches. So that is a challenge in regards to where a lot of these are placed. However, certainly that was part of when we reposted the RFP because it was an ad alternate to discuss a company's action to trash. We listed trash as a specific call-out for what somebody would say they could provide. Now again, as many of us know, this is a call for, a request for proposal. We evaluated a lot of proposals that were out there as we prepared for this process. We looked at some national standards and the companies that were providing elsewhere that were having success with this kind of business. And so we landed on what we thought would be an appropriate standard or what we knew might come back in in terms of companies, what they're doing now. This is one of the options that we saw in many places and is what came back in the proposal and that we negotiated down to this level. So a couple of other things I'll, I'll add here. Well, that's the answer to your question. Councilmember Begley, I'll come back to other items if you have them.
And inspection and maintenance of, is it the, did you cover that? Where, are they periodically done or what is the process for that and how many are there?
So again, I, I won't speak for our potential contractor to talk about their specific process. But what I will tell you is something that, that has already been conceptualized is a full audit of our system, of which we've already extended an invitation to Metro to be part of that. And the full resetting of every bench is part of this proposal by our potential new contractor. And so again, I'll let them represent themselves in terms of their process. But those are the things that are definitely the step forward in terms of this reset that we're focusing on. But I'll, I'll hand it back off to them to address the, the maintenance.
Okay. Mark, did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, like what Matt said, we would be sending someone there. Actually, they're scheduled to be there next week. His name is Carl Romeo. He's been with our company for over 30 years. And he hates when I call him this, but he's the guru of anything that's street-related. So he will go visit every single location, every bus stop. He's going to take a picture, GPS everything, put together a full report of all the locations. He sends it to John. John sends it off to Matt. And then you can go through the whole list and say, yes, we want one at this bus stop. Yes, we want one here. No, we don't want one there. And he'll make recommendations. But at the end of the day, the city will have the, the final say of what, what locations we can have a bench at and which ones we can't.
Okay, and one more-
And then regarding the maintenance, you'll, because of the scanners, you'll be able to see all the maintenance records that we do as we do the maintenance every single month.
Okay, and I got one more question for you, Mark. Will you hire local people and how many?
So when we first started out, well, you're definitely going to have an installer and someone who's going to be doing the maintenance. We're going to hire a local district manager. So that's actually how I started with the company. I've been with COA for almost 25 years. I was the local district manager who was out there selling the advertising and working with the small business owners. So we will have those people in place who can manage the program on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Director, I'm really excited about you using the word, not using the word threat when we have conflict. As the city of Omaha, it is my thought process that we would want to do very good at how we handle conflict, how we deal with resolutions and things of that nature when we're working with contractors. We have a gentleman here that came to the mic and, and, I mean, he, he said that he had reached out to you for 16 months. I would like to give you an opportunity to talk about the things that you used the word allege rather than threat, but yeah.
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. So we have had a long relationship with our incumbent vendor. And we did have communication up to the point as far as discussion of the future of this program until we activated the first RFP. Now, most of the communication happened with Steve Slater, who manages the majority of our contracts and was the direct liaison for this one. Once we engaged in that process, though, there's parameters and regulations about how much we can engage in, in regards to anything about what might be happening past what is the end of the agreement. That being said, he, we worked together in good faith past that time. And he was still, they were still benefiting from the previous arrangement as we got prepared and had to go through the multiple iterations of the RFP we did to land in this spot today proposing the new agreement. So the fact, the statement about no communication is absolutely not true. The interest in getting together about this specific process and not giving other people that opportunity was definitely outside the scope of what was acceptable.
So what prompted you to put, to submit a RFP for this?
Our responsibility is to bring the best service to the residents of Omaha. And in our opinion, we had limited our scope on what was potentially available as far as providing this service was concerned. I'm sorry and sad if somebody is not able to compete to the level to continue serving. And an RFP process is just that, competitive. And we had somebody rise to the level of showing a product and a possible service higher than what our incumbent delivered through this process. And thus, our committee made this choice to recommend who we are. And I would cite, and we listed some of this in the information we shared, a 40-plus years' experience, 300 municipal and public transit clients across North America. So somebody that, again, we interpreted and our committee interpreted would be a step forward. We're replacing all of our benches through them. In regards to the ordinance, you know, we're providing a like service or accepted, an alternate, if you will, which is absolutely acceptable within our purchasing code of mounted benches, installed mounted benches, not 400-pound unmounted benches. So we have a parallel there that we're drawing from. And we're also getting a stabilized fixed income as part of consistent revenue for the city that is different than what was in the previous contract or what was proposed previously prior to this RFP and the collection of information we had. And then certainly, it was very attractive to have the tracking system that was just described. And that ability to check things in real time, have that kind of consistency, it, it actually is something that merges with our existing GIS system. So the technology step was absolutely part of what we reviewed in regards to the proposal of other companies, of which there were three who submitted and were reviewed.
So would you say that the city's needs have changed and you were looking for different results, different accommodations?
Everything changes and evolves. That's constant, absolutely. In this case, when we received proposals and reviewed that with our committee and again, in the effort to try and be as comprehensive as possible, not only did we have members of Parks and Rec, we invited the planning department and the mayor's office to be part of us evaluating things thoroughly and fairly and properly in regards to the current needs that we have. And again, we received proposals that we rated and evaluated and landed on this being the best opportunity to serve residents, serve citizens at a higher level with this responsibility of the Parks and Recreation Department.
So did we do any reaching out to the current person, the gentleman? I don't know his name, but did, did we, did we reach out to him to, you know, kind of prod him along or change the, get him to see that, that our needs were different?
He referenced the amount of time that he had been connected to us. And having served us at that level, we felt like there was an advantage of having been part of the system here. And again, to not taint the process and make any of those who were submitting to us newly or not our incumbent feel like they had any other advantage other than the fact that they had been serving us for the amount of time they mentioned. That being said, they still fell well short of what other proposals shared with us in terms of the ability to serve residents and citizens differently at a higher level and with new technology and with the opportunity to update our infrastructure with new benches and things that would create a more consistent service, was the interpretation.
So for lack of a better word, did, did you provide an exit interview with him?
We informed him as part of the process. The agreement, the contract having expired about how things played out in terms of awarding to someone else. Never did they make us aware that they were going to stop serving. They, again, have continued to benefit for the time since the contract actually expired. Certainly, we would have liked to have moved everything along faster. I've worked with all of you closely enough that you know the Parks and Recreation Department has an incredible amount of moving parts. We worked this into our system around everything else that we had to manage and unfortunately had a couple of resets in there that were strategic about making sure that the proposal was accurate to what we were trying to achieve as far as service to residents and the update or upgrade to this bus bench program that we were aspiring to.
And lastly, I too am concerned about spending money in Omaha, giving opportunities for those in Omaha. Nothing against out-of-town providers, but there was nothing we could do to, to, to keep this in-house?
Our charge is to create the best service and opportunity for residents and citizens. It's not to serve, solely serve the local business community. I think that's a great thing and I think that's something we aspire to have be part of as much as we do in our department. But again, the RFP was about submitting a proposal and meeting criteria and being evaluated on what was the best service. In this case, a national organization came to us saying they were interested in having their, making their impact on the Omaha community. And that's where we've landed on presenting to you what we believe is that step forward and that best fit in terms of this next iteration of bus bench provision.
Thank you. Councilman Hug, you're recognized.
Far Matt. Through your, through the Omaha Parks Department, I, I'm sure you do thousands of RFPs and bids every year? Hundreds?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. You, you mentioned earlier that, and you said, I believe you said your first RFP. Were there multiple RFPs on this project?
So we posted an RFP and the main catalyst was the lack of information that came back in terms of response about trash. And that being something we knew was a concern to at least have an opportunity to serve. Again, I don't, I'm not planning to turn this service into a trash collection business. There's a fine balance here. As much as we know there's need to have attention to trash around bus benches, private property owners and other partners in the community are still responsible for trash primarily. That being said, we added that and reposted with the opportunity to very specifically talk about somebody's strategy about trash as an element of what we ask people to present. So yes, maybe wrongfully, we left that as something that might be an opportunity to create distance in terms of the proposals. And when nothing was submitted for trash specifically, we elected to make it a mandatory- part of the submission.
All right, so how many RFPs did you end up doing?
Two.
Two, just two?
The repost with that modification.
And without me having to go back through and reread everything, the proposal ahead of us will generate how much monthly revenue for the city of Omaha?
It's $100,000 annually.
Okay, annually?
Correct.
Okay. And on the previous contract, what was that amount?
I'll ask Steve to reference what that maximum potential was.
Yeah, the maximum, Steve Slater, Parks, the maximum was $131,000. That number had went down substantially due to a credit that was given when the bunches, benches were removed along Dodge Street with the Orbit Project. There were also benches removed along, over at the Medical Center and those were credit backed. So last we reviewed the revenue coming in, it was substantially lower than $131,000.
Do you, do you recall what neighborhood or amount we were looking at?
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
Could you repeat that?
What amount? You said it was drastically reduced, how much?
It just went down to the last in 2022, I believe we received $6,000.
$6,000?
Yes.
And, and that was all credit?
It was based on credits that he had, Mr. Paulson had issued against the, what he knew benches, replacement benches, revenue lost. The previous director worked with him on the agreement. Again, the benches that were taken out along Dodge Street, Medical Center, he would give credit back for those and we understand those were revenue producers.
And '22 was the last year the city received?
I believe '22, I'd have to look, but I believe 19, 2022 was the last we've received any payments from him.
Okay.
I will add, thank you Steve, I will add that this new version of the agreement has some other protections to ensure that that revenue is consistent. That was an evolution in terms of us being part of the contribution that we're committed to as a department in terms of producing revenue and we've, we believe we've stabilized that through this new contract arrangement.
Madam Chair, I have some questions for the previous contract holder, our current contract holder.
That is up to you. You may call up whoever you wish.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And although we are all up here listening to every word you say, it's been a long day and I apologize, I'm going to have to ask you, for the record, your name and your address.
My name is Jim Paulson. My address is 17410 Storage Road, Omaha, Nebraska, 68136.
Okay. And so the last revenues you paid the city of Omaha was in '22, correct?
No, we paid in '23.
It was paid in '23, but it was for '22?
We paid in '22 and '23.
In '23, okay. Do you remember how much you paid in '23?
We paid the exact amount that was agreed upon. No, I do not because I don't do the books. But we agree, we submitted the exact amount agreed upon when the city removed 100-plus benches and up and down Dodge Street had dramatically affected how we could do business.
Okay.
Steve Slater, Steve Slater agreed that this would be a fair resolution. And then let me point out that our, our bid, this one, this RFP, is $100,200, which is best and nice. The other company is at 100.
Before they took out the 100 benches, what was the maximum benches you had?
We had 400, and then I would also like to point out, when we took over this program in 2015, we spent $350,000 providing all-new brand, brand-new bus benches. So those, I'm sorry, what was your, what was your question?
What was the maximum number of ben, what was the number of benches you had prior to the 100 being removed from Dodge Street around the Med Center?
We supplied the city 400 brand-new bus benches when we started and then we lost over, well over 100 of the, and Dodge Street was our biggest money-producing road because of the street volume.
So when they removed the 100 bus benches, you had 400 bus benches on the street?
I believe that would be considered, you're in a range, I mean, this is going back. I would have to check my records to be exact, but I believe you're in some sort of a range.
Reduced 25%. Where is your office located?
We're off 174th and Storage Road, 174th 10 Storage Road. That's the address I submitted.
Okay. What, what part of Omaha is that in?
We're on, we're on 180th just south of Harrison.
Okay, are you south of Harrison?
We're, we're considered Omaha.
Okay, you're, you're south of Harrison?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Not far enough south to be out of this.
The reason I'm asking is I'm not familiar with the area.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have for you. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Oh, thank you. There's no further lights, but I would like to just make a couple comments. We are here, the agenda item that we are voting on is whether or not to approve the contract with Creative Outdoor Advertising. This council does not get to determine who, if we vote no on this, we don't get to turn around and vote on who we want. That actually is up to the Parks Department. They could actually reject all, they could send it back out, they could send, it doesn't mean that this city council would then get to control who gets the contract. I just wanted to make that extremely clear, that we're not here to pick between two people. We're here to vote, Agenda Item 50, up or down. So that's all I have. There are no further lights. Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one. For Item 54, I believe there's a request to withdraw this item from the agenda.
Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Johnson.
What do we motion in on?
This is to remove Item 54 from the agenda.
They asked for it.
Yep, yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 55, a resolution to approve an application for state assistance pursuant to the Sports Arena Facility Financing Assistance Act to fund promotion of the arts and cultural events provided by the Omaha Performing Arts Society.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 55 is this evening. Proponents and opponents, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Members of City Council, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. This was removed the consent agenda during pre-council today, so I indicated I would be here to answer any questions. As I indicated this morning, this would approve and authorize the city to participate in an application jointly with the nonprofit Omaha Performing Arts Society to apply to the state for a sales tax turnback. If you have any questions, I am in the light of the hour available.
Thank you. Are there other proponents or opponents? Just state your name, address. I think I can assume whether you're a proponent or an opponent, but I'll let you say it.
Joan Squires, Omaha Performing Arts President, 1200 Douglas Street, 68102. I am a proponent, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for spending the entire afternoon and into the evening with us. I'll ask for any other proponents or opponents on Agenda Item 55. Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing. And Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Jennifer, I'll just call you up for a quick question. I just, you said it this morning and I think it just, we want to make sure it's in the record that this in no way conflicts with the, the turnback that's associated with the CHI Center.
That is correct. The portion of the CHI area that overlaps with this particular area will still continue to go turnback to the CHI with the exception of the receipts from the Steel House Omaha, which is an Omaha Performing Arts facility and is the basis for their application.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. The turnback tax currently is a benefit or an opportunity for North Omaha and South Omaha. How will that impact those funds with this also coming from turnback tax?
This will only apply to turnback tax or to sales, state sales tax receipts generated within 600 feet of the Steel House Omaha only. So it will not apply to any sales tax generated in North or South Omaha, but only within 600 yards, yards or feet of the Steel House downtown.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Hey Joan, if you would, wouldn't mind coming up?
Joan Squires.
Thanks. Can you kind of give the community a, a commercial regarding OPA? Because I think what you do and what your workers do for the Omaha community is great. It's marvelous. And I just would like for you to share what you do so that others that don't have the opportunity to know the significance that you play would be able to hear that.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Omaha Performing Arts, a big part of our mission is our, particularly our education and engagement activities for the community through those programs and what this turnback tax will help fund. Our activities like our free concert series at Miller Park, which we kick off this Saturday, last weekend's Canopy South Concert for Global Sounds in South Omaha, our Voices Amplified Series, where we lift up underserved voices throughout the community, the scholarships that we provide to students around the community, and so many of the programs that we bring both within our buildings and outside of them. We believe it's an important part of bringing arts and culture to the entire community. And beyond that is the economic impact that all of our activities bring to the city and region, now totaling over $61 million in economic impact. So it's been a significant workforce development. It helps us attract and retain our workforce and we really are here to serve the community and appreciate the cities and the council's support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Madam President. Ms. Squires, you don't have to get up again, but I, thanks for being here on a long day and I see you brought my former, favorite former state senator with you there to keep an eye on everybody, but I just wanted to say, I went to the Holland Performing Arts Center last week for the music of David Bowie. What a spectacular venue. The Steel House, I think I'm going to be going down there next week, so I just, thanks for everything you do kind of behind the scenes, but it's vital and important to the economic development, growth and everything for the community, so thanks. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, no further lights, is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Item 67, in ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the title of Fabrication Mechanic III to Machinist. Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number 67 is this evening. Are there any proponents?
Good evening, Chelsea Ship, Human Resources Department. I am a proponent and I am here to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you for staying so late. Are there any other proponents on Agenda Item 67? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Motion approved.
No. They said, you can do it next week. We'll, we'll promise, we'll make it known. All right, next item. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, move on to 68.
Yep. Item 68, in ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the title of Sign Painter to Sign Technician and changing the hourly pay range. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 68 is this evening. Are there any proponents?
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources Department, proponent, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents to Agenda Item 68? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Next item.
Item 69, in ordinance to approve an agreement with Spring Share LLC for a three-year subscription of products and services in an estimated amount of $76,578.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 69 is this evening. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Next item.
Item 70, in ordinance to approve the transfer of $4,358,602 in the 2024 budget from the wage adjustment account to the Fire Department.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 70 is this evening. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 71, in ordinance to approve an accepted grant in the amount of $536,458 for the Police Department for high-intensity drug trafficking areas.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 71 is this evening. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 72, in ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 18 of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding nuisance weeds and home composting.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 72 is this evening. Are there any proponents?
Hello, Brian Hauser, City of Omaha Parks Code Enforcement. I'm here as a proponent for these changes. They are intended to be, just bring us up to speed with kind of current community needs and help us better serve our community in regards to how we enforce Section 18 of the Municipal Code. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. And thank you for sticking around for so long. Sorry that you're last, yes. Are there any other proponents for Agenda Item 72? Seeing none. Are there any opponents for Agenda Item 72? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item 73 through 104 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Roll call.
Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 7:26.